Welcome to this special meeting of the Hayward City Council. I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting to order and ask Councilmember Salinas to please lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
And of course, in recognition of Flag Day today, right?
Oh, yes.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, where motion, flag, indivisible, liberty, justice, for all.
Yes, thank you for that reminder. It is Flag Day and absolutely appropriate to salute the flag this evening. And so with that, Madam City Clerk, we call the roll.
Yes, Madam Mayor, good evening. Councilmember Andrews.
Present.
Councilmember Lemmon.
Present.
Councilmember Marquez.
Present.
Councilmember Salinas.
Present.
Councilmember Wahav.
Here.
Councilmember Zermeño.
Yes.
Mayor Halliday.
Here.
Thank you.
That brings us to our closed session announcement. I think we have our city attorney, Mr. Lawson, on. Yes. Mr. Lawson, we had, the council did meet and close session earlier this evening and we discussed three items and I'll let him report on all three of those items.
Thank you, Mayor. Greetings, Mayor and Council. The council convened in closed session at 5:00 PM pursuant to posted notice with Councilmember Lemmon absent. When the meeting was convened, there were no public speakers. Councilmember Lemmon joined the meeting at 5:15 approximately. And then with all members present, the council discussed three matters. One, labor. The council discussed labor negotiations involving local 1909 firefighters but took no reportable action. Two, regarding property. The council discussed property transactions involving the site known as St. Regis and took no reportable action. And three, finally, under pending litigation, the council discussed City of Hayward versus PG&E. The council moved seconded and carried with Zermeño making the motion, Mayor Halliday seconding the motion. And with a unanimous 7-0 vote, the council authorized legal counsel to dismiss without prejudice cause of action seeking injunctive relief as to the future calculation of the utility users tax related to the climate credit program. The closed session adjourned at 6:42 PM. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. That brings us to public comments this evening. This is your opportunity to speak on any items that are not otherwise on our agenda. If you want to speak on any of those items, wait till the item is called, but this is for other comments, for items not under the agenda. Is there anyone who would like to make a public comment? And I do think we have, we have a hand raised here. So, Andre Van Horn.
Oh, I was listening to a city planning commission meeting last week. They were moving to delay consideration of a proposed housing entitlement, I suppose. And it seemed that there was some controversy about whether if delaying for two weeks would not allow the project to go forward until next fall due to the city council not being in session. I was wondering if there's any possibility, if there's been any consideration of that, if there's any possibility that the city council could meet in July to take up that issue if they're not able to move forward with it in a timely fashion. Thank you.
Thank you. And I, yeah, I'll just say the city council is always ready to meet when the need arises during our break.
Mayor, I'll just make a comment that if the planning commission approves the project, that would be the final approval needed. So unless someone called it up to the council, that would be the only reason the council needs to consider it. So, you know, assuming that it gets approved at Planning Commission on June 23rd, then it wouldn't necessarily need to come to council. But again, you know, staff stands ready to schedule a special meeting if the council chooses to hold that special meeting.
Yes, okay, thank you. Did we have any other, any other requests?
I'm not aware of any other requests, Mayor.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Okay, with that, I'll close public comments and we will move on to city manager comments this evening.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I have actually a number of comments to make tonight. First, I wanted to just remind members of the public that last year, the council acknowledged Juneteenth as a city holiday and as such, we will be observing a business closure of non-emergency city functions and City Hall will be closed next Monday in observance and honorance of Juneteenth. So just wanted to remind folks about that. Couple other items that the deadline to apply to be a board or commission member is this coming Thursday, June 16th, and that would be to the city clerk's office. You can find more information about that online. And I wanted to follow up, I don't know if some of you saw this announcement today, but the Alameda County Healthcare Services Agency announced that Washington Hospital Healthcare System will be designated as the county's next Level 2 Adult Trauma Center within five years. And I think the council will remember that they adopted a resolution supporting that action. I did receive a phone call from a representative of the Washington Hospital Healthcare System CEO's office this afternoon and he wanted me to pass along the CEO's thanks to the mayor and council for their action in supporting that and supporting the trauma center application. So that was from Washington Hospital. Couple others. Lots of announcements tonight. As we all know, California is currently in a severe drought and all communities, including Hayward, are being asked to use less water. This is especially important as we come into the summer months. Hayward residents have long but excellent stewards of water and our residential per capita water usage is among the lowest in the Bay Area, but we need to do even more. On June 28th, the council will consider implementing additional measures to reduce water demand. In the meantime, our website has information about rebates and water efficient practices that can help all of us reach our goal. So we would encourage residents and property owners to go to the website and to reach out to our water staff who can provide additional information about replacing appliances in your homes and businesses. And then on a related note, staff is pleased to announce the city's online water customer portal has officially launched. Through this portal, Hayward Water System customers can now view their hourly water usage, receive alerts when their premises have, are suspected to have a leak, and can pay their bills, all-in-one user-friendly online portal. Through the portal, all online payments are now fee-free and you have an expanded suite of payment options, including PayPal, Apple Pay, and Google Pay, among others. You can also still continue to pay your bill over the phone at 510-583-4636 or in cash at various participating retail locations that are listed on the city's website, as well as our kiosk outside in front of City Hall. And all Hayward Water System customers will soon be receiving a redesigned water bill that will include additional information about the portal and these payment options. And then lastly, but not least, in today's stack newsletter that came out, there was an article that talked about the city inviting community members to participate during the month of June as we embark on our objective residential standards project for new housing in the city so that we can get feedback from residents about what housing should look like. And this initiative has been renamed and the Hayward Residential Design Study will take into account all housing types from detached homes, duplexes, townhouses, multi-household buildings, and mixed-use housing projects. In addition, the purpose of this project is to make design requirements more predictable for builders and for residents of neighborhoods in which new projects are proposed. There is a project page, if you go to the city's website and if you put, probably search "Residential Design Study," you can go and see there are what we're calling walk shops, not workshops, walk shops, scheduled for Saturday, June 25th and Monday, June 27th. So please sign up and join, there are Eventbrite links. Walk Shop 1 will be in downtown, Saturday, June 25th at 10:30. Walk Shop 2 is in the Canary Burbank neighborhood, Saturday, June 25th at 1:00 PM. Walk Shop 3 is in the Whitman-Mossin neighborhood, Saturday, June 25th at 3:30 PM. Again, all of these are on the city's website. Walk Shop 4 will be in the Hayward Hills, Monday, June 27th at 4:00 PM. And Walk Shop 5 will be in South Hayward, starting at the South Hayward Bart parking lot, Monday, June 27th at 6:30. So we would love to see a lot of residents out and helping us design new housing in Hayward. So that is, those are my comments this evening, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. It's interesting we're calling these walk shops. I mean, okay.
You will be walking through the neighborhoods and sort of looking at different types of housing and providing feedback to our city staff on the features that you like and don't like.
Great. That sounds like a lot of fun for a lot of people, so I hope they'll come out. Okay, so that brings us to our action items this evening. And before we go into them, starting with our consent calendar, I'm going to ask if there are any objections from council if we move item number five regarding the California Air National Guard Site proposed development up above number four. We'll do our consent calendar, one to three first, and then take that item up ahead of the work session on the 2023 Electrification Reach Code. We have people here who, representing the project sponsors on number, what's currently number five. So unless I see any objections from council, is there anyone who, seeing no one, that is the order, we'll take business up this evening. And, okay, so that brings us to our consent calendar, which this evening consists of items one through three. Is there anyone from the council or the public who would like to call one of these items off? Seeing no hands going up, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Move the item.
Okay. Moved by Councilmember Andrews, seconded by Councilmember Salinas. On the motion, Madam City Clerk, will you call the roll?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Andrews.
Aye.
Councilmember Lemmon.
Aye.
Councilmember Marquez.
Aye.
Councilmember Salinas.
Yes.
Councilmember Wahav.
Yes.
Councilmember Zermeño.
Gee.
Mayor Halliday.
Yes, and the motion carries with seven aye votes. So now that brings us to what is labeled on our agenda as item number five, being moved up to item number four, the, a work session on a proposed development of the California Air National Guard Site at the Hayward Executive Airport. And I think our Public Works Director, Mr. Ameri, is going to start us off on this one?
Correct.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Ameri.
Thank you and good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. As you mentioned, Montecito Group has prepared a conceptual plan for the development of the airport, California Air National Guard Site. The project concept was presented to the council airport committee in April and CAC referred it to the city council. Airport manager Doug McNeely, along with the team from Montecito are here this evening to present the concept to council and receive your questions and comments. Doug, I'm going to share the presentation. And hopefully you can see it.
Yes.
Okay.
You may want to make that full screen. Yeah, thanks, okay.
Thank you. Go ahead, Doug.
Thank you, Director Ameri. Mayor, council, good evening. This is a brief presentation on the potential development of the former California Air National Guard Site at Hayward Executive Airport. Next, please. First, some background, the California Air National Guard Site, or Kang Site as it's referred, is located at 1525 West Winton Avenue. The site was used by the military until 1980. Total of 21 acres was returned to the city in 2012. The area under discussion tonight is 16 acres in size and is depicted in orange on that slide. Next, please. RFPs for aeronautical development were released in 2001 and 2007. One of the responses had merit, but negotiations were unsuccessful. A third RFP was released in 2016. None of the three respondents met the minimum qualifications. The feedback from potential tenants pointed to the condition of the site as an issue. The buildings do not meet modern code requirements. In 2013, Montecito, excuse me, 2018, Montecito Development LLC proposed an office and warehouse complex, but further discussions were not held. The proposal was subsequently restructured to focus on life sciences and advanced manufacturing development. To continue the presentation, I would like to introduce Mark Heavy and his team from Montecito, who will provide more information on their proposed development. Mark?
Thank you, Doug. Madam Mayor, members of the council, and thank you for moving us up. We appreciate that. My name is Mark Heavy. I'm a partner with Montecito Development. This is my partner, Carl Higgins. We're here with some of the members of our design team to show you our vision of the development of the Kang Site. If you could run us through that, Doug, that'd be great. Next slide. So we envision this development to be basically a destination, a destination both for the members of the community and for businesses. Members of the community can come and learn about the history in the Tuskegee Airmen. The community center will be available for the users of the existing facilities at the Kang Site. And the history walk will detail the specific time periods and history and significant events of the city of Hayward, to really bring people out to share this site. I'm going to turn it over to my partner, Carl, to walk you through some of the details.
Thanks, Mark. Good evening, Madam Mayor. Councilman Salinas, Councilman Zermeño, it's great to see you again. Also you too, Kelly. Thank you for having us. Next slide, please, for the Tuskegee Airmen Museum. Thank you. This is the cornerstone of the project in our thinking. This is unique signage, complementary color schemes, and architectural styles. It's a destination to honor the airmen and to never forget their sacrifices and their achievements. It's also a place to gather, to listen, to educate, to exchange ideas, and to build upon them to benefit the city, the residents, and the airport. It's 4,000 square feet and the Tuskegee Airmen Museum will fulfill the city's commitment to honor those brave pilots and crew members from World War II. We're very pleased to have the support of the William Bill Campbell Chapter for the San Francisco Bay Area and David Cunningham, who's the president of the chapter, whose father was a Tuskegee Airmen. Next slide, please. This is a very, really exciting aspect, we think, of the project. This is what brings the community and the project together. This is the history walk. It celebrates and commemorates Hayward's unique history. That's our goal, is to celebrate and commemorate it. It's 3,400 feet long and it will encircle the entire exterior of the project. It's events, people, special places like Russell City, and telling those stories with placards, with monuments, with statuary. And as Councilman Salinas said at the CAC meeting in April, those QR codes are a link to the world. And that's a tremendous opportunity for us to expose the employees that are working on site, the residents, students, community members of Hayward and the East Bay, to their history and to their accomplishments. We're working with Diane Currie at the Hayward Area Historical Society, and I'm very pleased to introduce Dr. Nick Behan, who I think you all know, who is Chair of Ethnic Studies at Cal State East Bay. Also, Dr. Bridget Ford, who is the Chair of the History Department at Cal State East Bay. David Cunningham, who we spoke of earlier. We're also reaching out to Hayward Unified, to Rotary, to Scouting, to the Hayward Arts Council, and to the Hayward Chamber of Commerce, and we know that there will be more. We see this as a significant aspect of the development. Next slide, please. Montecito and our teammates have closely examined your new guidelines, and I want you to understand just how closely we have examined those because I brought several of the pages of the design guidelines with me and we've been going over these regularly. We looked at it internally with our team. And then we had our architects at Ware Malcolm, and this is Gary Drew, who's the principal of Ware Malcolm in the Pleasanton office and has been deeply involved from the very early stages in the project. And our engineers at Kimley Horn, who have done a great deal of work at the airport and in the city. And we all collaborated internally to create what you are seeing today. Our goal is to reflect the city's vision from your design guidelines into our conceptual site plan and then to integrate them into the tech campus as a whole, into the buildings, the landscaping, the amenities, and the history walk. We want to have a Class A campus for you and make this a destination place, creating a sense of place at the site. Next slide, please. These guidelines that you have speak to natural sunlight, comfort, seating areas outside, tables, walking paths. These and more are all represented in our conceptual designs for the campus amenities. They are critical also in attracting the workforce. Next slide, please. This is an advanced manufacturing building and you're looking at it from the perspective of West Winton. As you can see, there's a great deal of glass, high-tech glass, and building articulations that are shown, and that provides natural light for the workers who will be there creating and designing 21st century products. Architecturally, it's a continuation of the visual relationship to the life science buildings with colors, materials, shapes, and mass, and we think this creates a cohesiveness to the campus. Mark?
Next slide, please. So here's a list of potential tenants. These are the tenants we're going to go after. They're not all going to end up here, but we just wanted to give you a sample of the type of user that will be attracted to this project. These will be life science, biotech companies creating incredible prescriptions and treatments and advanced manufacturing. This won't be a big manufacturing facility. This will be the skunk works where they go and invent things and get them and prototype and roll them out to the public, where they're able to test these things. Next slide, please. And to demonstrate this, there are currently 7 million square feet of demand in life science and advanced manufacturing in the marketplace. They recently completed 1.6 million square foot of deals. These companies are active in the market, they're looking for space. The key to this whole business plan is once the doctors at Stanford or the scientists at Tesla come up with a new product, they want to prototype it and get it into manufacturing to get it tested quickly. They need to be near where their headquarters is so those scientists and doctors can get there quickly, and they need the space now. So we would go ahead, we're proposing to build this space spec, which means, once we have approval from the city, we're going to put up the buildings. So when those guys are ready, they can say, when are you going to be done? We're under construction, it will be done in six months, then they can sign a lease because they don't have a year or two to wait. They, they have a hot product, patents, all that kind of stuff. They want to be in the market as soon as, they want to be in the market as soon as they can. Next slide, please. Obviously, this is going to be an economic engine for the city and the airport. There's a lot of big numbers up there. We're proposing roughly 300,000 square feet. All these numbers will change a little bit, but we do know two things. This will create a lot of jobs and there'll be high-paying jobs because these are not distribution buildings, these are manufacturing and life science buildings, where they have labs and people working on the latest technologies. The other number that I think is really important is our proposal includes renting the community center to the city for $1 a year. So basically, you have the use of that building, the Tuskegee Airmen, et cetera, as part of our project. That, that is part of our proposal.
And I just add one, one other aspect of that. We'll build those buildings and give them for a buck. We'll, we will build those buildings, a shell, and give them to the community center and give them to the Tuskegee Airmen, and they can rent it for a buck a year. And we're really excited to do that. Montecito has specialized in airport development since 1991. We're in seven states right now. Since this slide has been created, it's actually closer to 1,000 acres. We love to do aeronautical and non-aeronautical development. We're a niche developer, but we're a very experienced developer and a successful one at that. Several years ago, we met Fourstones, which is a private equity and real estate development firm, and they have signed a long-term 10-year agreement with us to be our equity partner in these. JLL works for us nationwide as our brokers. Ware Malcolm works for us nationwide as our architects. They've done 132 projects in the city, in the city of Hayward, over 3.5 million square feet. They're the 14th-ranked architecture and engineering firm in the country. They know the city well, and so does Kimley Horn. You may recall, you probably do, that they were the lead on the SkyWest reuse report for the city of Hayward. And in talking with Doug, he's been very pleased with their work. They're our nationwide land development, land planning, and engineering firm. This team is very familiar with the market. We're very familiar with the city and we have experience in the city and on the airport. This is the right team, we think, that can execute the city's visions. Next slide, please. This is an exciting process, but it's a long process. Kelly and I were talking a little bit earlier before we went into session. The next step, if you like what you see and you like what you hear and you believe that we represent your ideas well and understand them, we'd like to negotiate a lease with you. And then we'll get into the entitlement phase with the GPA, with environmental, with the rezone. The land has got to be released from aeronautical use by the FAA. We think we can do that in parallel. We think we can do that in parallel with our development application. We have a nationally-ranked law firm, Kaplan &amp; Kirsch. Peter Kirsch is an expert in releasing land under what's now a new regulation from the FAA called Section 163, and also an economic and land planning consultant, whose name is Barbie Schalmo, and she's with the CNS Companies. Barbie and Peter wrote the book and created the advice for airports on the 163 release from aeronautical use. We want to listen to the community, we want to be involved in public hearings, we want to go through design review, then the planning commission, then we'd like to come back to you for approval of our entitlements and our lease. Next slide, please. We think this creates an economic engine for Hayward. We really do. We think it honors the Tuskegee Airmen and the history of Hayward. We think it exemplifies the city's new industrial design guidelines, and it will act as a magnet for other similar companies. It meets what the market is looking for now. 7 million square feet is trying to be pursued right now. High-tech jobs, high-paying jobs that benefit the community and public space, and the Airport End Prize Fund gets $15 million over the first 15 years. And I want to say something else, too, because we have been deeply involved in this project for the last, at least the last 14, 15, 16 months, redeveloping and reengineering our original proposal to you. And I'm going to talk to you about a goal, and that goal, I think, is audacious. I truly think it is. We want to help Hayward and the airport become the new high-tech hub in the East Bay for advanced manufacturing and life science. The next phase of advanced manufacturing and life science in the city of Hayward could come with the SkyWest reuse and redevelopment. So there, we said it, and we mean it, and we think that we can do that. You have the most important piece, you have the land. We come to the table with capital, expertise, and the team. If you're willing to authorize the city manager to negotiate a lease with us, we'll get together and get to work right now. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So did staff have any other comments to follow this, or should we go into council? This is a work session, so we will have public...
We're about ready to conclude, Madam Mayor. They outlined, the Montecito Group outlined the next steps primarily. Didn't mention the Surplus Land Act. We're working to determine that that doesn't apply here because it's airport-owned property. And that is it. And next slide, and we'll be glad to take any questions or comments.
Okay, thank you. So first, I will open public comments on this item and ask if there are any members of the public... There aren't any members of the... Unless, well, unless any of the rest of you wanted to say anything, but here... And I'm not seeing any hands going up from online attendees, so I'll go ahead and close public comments, and we'll move to council. And Councilmember Andrews.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for your presentation, and I just want to make a comment about your presentation. I really appreciate your attitude and humbleness of coming here with your presentation. We have a lot of developers who come through and just try to tick the boxes and not really understand what we're trying to do here in Hayward, and I feel like you all did a lot of your homework. Shout out to a lot of groups that are important in Hayward, that can help me tell the story, and I really appreciate you reaching out to the Tuskegee Airmen folks out there. I did attend their traveling museum at Meridian, and it was a great display, and I'm happy to see that we're considering a permanent home here. So one question I do have is that the art walk, I'm really, really happy to see that level of development that's going to happen with the History Walk and the Art Walk, and wanted to know if there will be any kind of element for children to engage. I love the QR code, love the images that you projected. That's the kind of art I would love to continue to see happen in Hayward, but just wanted to see if there is any features that could help kids engage.
Thank you for your comments, Councilmember Andrews. Yes, the short answer is yes. The long answer is, that's why we're reaching out to the school district, that's why we're reaching out to scouting. There will be... The History Walk is 3,400 feet long, just about 2/3 of a mile, and there will be multiple opportunities for young people to be involved and to shape the History Walk. So yes, short answer is yes.
Great. Okay. And then Russell City, did you get a lot of your information from the Hayward Historical Society? I know internally, we have some folks that are doing a lot of community engagement with the community regarding Russell City, and wanted to see how that was, how you all were connecting on that front as well.
So there are a number of people in the community. One of them is here tonight, and that's Nick. You want to come on up, Nick? Who have been advising us about Russell City, and you want to talk a little bit about the importance of it and why we want to commemorate it on the History Walk?
Yes, absolutely. So Dr. Behan, Professor and Chair of Ethnic Studies, California State University, Hayward. I've consulted with Diane Curry at the Hayward Historical Society for that very purpose. And right now, between, with her and myself, and Dr. Bridget Ford of History, again at California State University, Hayward, we are looking at a number of things that we can do. They've got a bunch of documents on Russell City. What can we put together? At this moment, and this also speaks to your prior question, the three of us are working on constructing a class for the fall, where our undergraduates at Cal State Hayward will be working with those materials to build a coherent narrative for the walk. Additionally, we think that we can get to a point where we can bring our students onto that walk to help younger kids, K-12. I'm not only, by the way, a professor at Cal State Hayward, but I also taught briefly in the Hayward Unified School District, so I understand what some of the needs are there and how we can reach some of these children. Hope that answers the question.
Yes, thank you, Professor. I've seen you speak before here in Hayward, so it's nice to see you here.
Nice to see you as well.
Thank you. And then, I think my last question, it was about SkyWest, and I don't know if other council members would speak to that, because I haven't been following very closely. I know in general what's going on with SkyWest, and wanted to see how we are engaging with HARD as it relates to SkyWest, and seeing if they're part of the conversations as it relates to this project as well, if we are going to be making that connection to SkyWest.
So, Councilmember, there are multiple land uses that are potentially being proposed for the redevelopment of the golf course. One of those is a business park, and this type of development, with this type of architecture and employee base, we think is a natural second step or a natural second phase, potentially, for that business park at SkyWest. And I'm not kidding when I say that I think Hayward can be the hub of advanced manufacturing and life sciences in the East Bay. I think that's a very worthy goal, and I think it's a very achievable goal. Does that help? Does that answer your question?
So you will be working, you'll probably communicate with other entities who will also keep HARD in the loop as it all relates to this project? If you are... Okay, great. All right, well, those are all my questions and comments right now, and again, thank you for your presentation, and just again, your excitement alone on this presentation was greatly appreciated. Thanks.
Nice to talk with you. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember Andrews. We'll go back to chambers here, and Councilmembers, Armando.
Mayor, thank you. And Montecito team, very good job, the second time for the presentation, as we did here at the Airport Committee, as Alex and you both stated. Let's see, I have five questions related to, as you are building your project. So as you're building your project, any thoughts on local hires?
I'm sorry?
Local hires.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
Yes.
So that's...
Job fairs, recruitment, absolutely.
Okay, very.
Working with the chamber.
Very good. Any thoughts on working with our building trades, folks?
Sorry?
Working with our building trades?
Yes, of course.
Okay, good.
In fact, because that's on the airport, this will be prevailing wage.
Okay, all right. Excellent. I was at a Tuskegee exhibit, something like maybe eight years ago, on the airport grounds, and that was quite large. How large of an exhibit hall are you thinking about for the Tuskegee exhibit?
2,000 and 2,000, so it'd be 4,000 square feet total? That's conceptually.
Okay, 2,000 at the moment. Conceptually, 2,000 for the Tuskegee and 2,000 the community. Okay, so 4,000, a room which is about 4,000 square feet. Okay. Any thoughts about making the community segment larger?
Sure, of course.
Okay, so please consider...
What were you thinking of?
That we're always looking for community centers, and I think that would be a great place for us to be able to host a couple of activities, and if we're just a little larger, I think it'd be great.
Can I just come in quick? So as Carl said, this is all conceptual.
Yes.
So we have all kinds of expansion. It's important to us to make it a destination for the community, but also, there are some groups that use the existing facilities, as old as they are on that site, and we want to make sure that they're facilitated. So one of the things we need to do, and our architect helped us with this, is we do programming. We say, what are the uses we need, how many square feet, what does that group need, et cetera. So this is Play-Doh. We're just, we're showing you the start, and we have, as Carl said, we have a long process to go through, so we're absolutely willing to go through those steps.
That, I do like the project, but I just want to make sure that these items are... And then my last question is, any thoughts on the historic marker on the hanger itself?
We have worked on that issue, Gary. You want to talk a little bit about that? We think that should be saved.
Yeah, this is, goes back to 1940s. It's historic. I mean, we had a relationship with World War II, and it's something that I personally would rather not lose. So your thoughts, or...
Good evening. My name's Gary Drew, Principal at Ware Malcolm Architects. Thank you, Mayor and councilpeople, for hearing us tonight. We at Ware Malcolm, like I say, we've done a lot of work in Hayward. I've been working with Hayward City for about 25 years, and currently are doing some of the rework. We're awarded some of the rework of the retails downtown, so we feel Hayward has a special sense of place, and this development does. Internally, we have a full graphics and branding group, and so we wanted to incorporate that sign into the development, so that it continues on, because it's a recognizable piece.
Yes. All right. Thank you very much. Some more questions to answer, Professor. Thank you, Cal State Hayward, 100%. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, and we'll go back here to Councilmember Marquez.
Thank you, Mayor, and I believe it's yourself, Councilmember Selena, and Armando that sit on the Airport Committee?
Yes, that's correct.
So thank you to those committee members who have obviously spent more time on this item. So thank you to my colleagues for clarifying questions. Although I reviewed the packet, for some reason, I was getting really alarmed, like, what's going to happen with SkyWest? So thank you for answering that question. I was very confused about what stage in this process we were at, but my understanding is, we're just looking at this one specific site, which is very close to our Fire Station 6, which is in, under renovations right now, and very close to Meridian, which is one of our newer projects. So I concur with the comments. I appreciate the due diligence in terms of the community outreach, partnering with our university and other community partners. And there's one instrumental individual that I did not hear mentioned, and that is Ben Henderson. I believe he used to serve on our Community Services Commission. He was the first person that I know advocated to this body with respect to honoring the Tuskegee Airmen, and so I'm not sure if he's still involved with these efforts, but just wanted to acknowledge, I think the first time I heard him bring that up was like in 2014 or 2015. So this discussion has been going on for a long time. I really appreciate the willingness to develop a community center. I definitely encourage you to do the analysis of programming. I've been to some events on that site, so I know that it's still being utilized, and I think at one point in the presentation, I heard it was proposed at 4,000 square feet, and then another slide said 6,000. So if we could just get clarity around that, and then again, to please encourage you to figure out what would be the best size. And then my question to the city manager is, who's going to be responsible for renting this space out? Is that going to come under the city of Hayward's jurisdiction, or how do you envision that playing out?
For the community center?
Yes.
It's probably going to fall to the airport staff, and we'd probably want to coordinate with community services staff, and, you know, we'd have to talk a little bit. We're having a larger internal discussion about who is managing, like Heritage Plaza, might fall to facility staff, but there's, you know, obviously, larger implications with the rental of the space, so I think we can continue to have that conversation as we move forward.
Okay. And later, we'll also develop guidelines in terms of the use, like, not necessarily for what purpose it could be rented out, correct?
Yeah, I think that would make a lot of sense, and in that case, it might make more sense for the airport staff to manage that space, just if we're trying to keep consistent with uses at the airport or ancillary uses.
Okay. And then, this is another question for you, city manager. I'm very excited to hear the emphasis of life science and advanced manufacturing, something that I brought up during mid-year budget cycle, that we need to beef up our efforts. I also heard in the presentation that if we're going to do this, we have to fast-track these permits. People aren't going to wait years to occupy these buildings. So what is the city's response in growing our economic development team and our planning division to actually process these applications to get these tenants into these buildings?
I'm actually less concerned with that piece of the process and more concerned with the FAA release of the land and how quickly that will happen. I think, you know, I was talking to the team right before the meeting, you know, if the council is comfortable with it, and obviously at their own risk, you know, we can move forward simultaneously to process all of the entitlement applications, the rezoning, get the construction documents underway while we're waiting for the FAA approval, and then also negotiating the lease agreement. So we can do all of that simultaneously to move fairly quickly instead of having it sequentially. So that would be my recommendation. You know, frankly, I think the big holdup is going to be the FAA in this process, and so we'll continue to work with our federal lobbyists, we'll work with the team's consultants to try and quickly move through that application process. But we will absolutely move as quickly as we can and deploy our resources to help move the project forward.
Okay, and how soon, or have we already started the process with the FAA?
We are waiting for feedback from the council this evening, and then I think as soon as her team can get with the Montecito team, we can start that process.
Okay, great. I would definitely support that. And then in the presentation, my understanding is, there would be a walking trail, is that the perimeter of this property, and would that be accessible to the public?
Yes, that's the History Walk, which is about 2/3 of a mile long, 3,400 feet, and that is accessible to the public and to the employees on site. It's also fenced off, so they can't get onto the airport active areas as well.
Okay. And then what are the thoughts? The presentation was impressive, but I also want to make sure we're consistent with our branding. There's been a lot of renovations already made at the airport, and we're just, you know, really trying to put Hayward on the map. So at what point would we be looking at specific design guidelines and selecting significant markers, signage? At what stage would we be reviewing that information?
We've already been doing that, Councilmember Marquez, in collaboration with Gary and his team at Ware Malcolm in Pleasanton, and also with our civil engineers, and also with Dr. Behan and the other people that we... Dr. Baham and the other people that we enumerated earlier. They've all been involved for a number of months with the discussions about what do the design guidelines say, and how do we apply that to our project, and what does that look like? And you'll see, what you saw tonight was conceptual. The next step, should the council desire to go forward, and we hope you do, is we'll start turning concepts into reality, and then sharing those with the public at the outreaches that we were talking about.
Okay, thank you. And then Alex, this would fall under our PLA agreement, correct, since it's a city-sponsored project?
We have to have a discussion with the city attorney's office and city manager to figure that out.
Okay. At what point would we have that information?
We can have those discussions and get back to you.
Okay. And then I did hear that there will be collaboration with the individuals responsible for developing Sky West, just to make sure there's good continuity and synergy and just design, and we're going to make sure that there's that, that level of communication. And obviously, that would go through the Airport Committee as well, correct?
Absolutely. But we are very, very early in that process, so no development team has been identified at this point.
Okay. Those are all my comments for now, but I am definitely in support of moving forward and getting in touch with the FAA as soon as possible. Thank you all for the great work.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And we'll go next to Councilmember Lambnun.
Thank you. You know, I appreciate the enthusiasm, as my colleagues have said, and, and wonder who you had contacted at the Rotary Club?
We haven't reached out to them yet. They're on our punch list, but...
Got it.
I, I do have to say, I believe there are two members of Rotary that are in chambers tonight.
There are, there are three in chambers and...
Three, thank you. Yes, you're right. Pardon me, you're right. Yeah, thank you.
No, it's all good. Thank you. And as I think a couple of my colleagues have said, you know, appreciate the engagement or the awareness of Russell City and thinking about the committee. Certainly, you know, the conversations around history and with, with Diane Curry are important, and there is the whole committee that is working on the issue, and so hopefully those two, two items are not happening separately, that they are happening in concert with each other. Similarly, the connectivity, I know a couple of my colleagues have brought up Sky West, and I understand why, and it, and I'm thinking in terms of, you know, not specifically to this project, but in thinking about this project and Sky West and development at the airport, are there trail connectivities that can happen to connect the shoreline, San Lorenzo Park, Sky West properties, et cetera? Because this, the History Walk as proposed is a great place to walk, and, you know, hopefully, if there is ways to do that safely, I understand it's airport property, we need to be careful, but I hope that'll be considered in the process. I appreciated my colleagues' comments around looking to collaboration with the building trades and consideration of both just that in general, and then how does this interact with the PLA as well? And there was one other point that I wanted to emphasize from, oh, the design piece. I, I'm glad that there is some connectivity to the existing architecture, because I know we talked about that, and the, the design as it's currently written is lovely and doesn't have a lot of engagement with that history. And I know that was something that community members had brought up, council had brought up, and so I appreciate that that conversation is happening regarding the signage and just trying to figure out how to preserve some of that historical design elements, as well as having an attractive, you know, marketable new campus. I look forward to seeing what happens. Oh, and thank you for talking about the streamlining, and I do support that as well, things happening in parallel rather than waiting for the FAA. Concur that, that as my colleagues brought up, getting this to happen as quickly as possible, and as the city manager said, moving, helping to move that quickly forward.
Thank you for your comments.
While we wait for the FAA.
Appreciate those. Anytime somebody in our side of the fence, in our shoes, hears the word co-processing, that makes us pretty happy, guys.
Okay. Thank you. I don't, oh, yeah, Councilmember Salinas.
Thank you. And, you know, Madam City Manager, you might as well start, you know, you might as well call FAA now, so. Let's start that, you know, start that. You know, that was one of the questions I wrote here was, you know, how long does it take? I know we can streamline as much as we can, but, you know, how long does it take? Do we know how, what's the, you know, I know we were going to do this sort of parallel process, but...
Yeah, I mean, I think the, the staff has estimated it can take up to a year for the FAA process, but if the applicant wants to speak as well on that timeline...
Councilmember Salinas, we can speak to that. We have two people on our team that are experts in doing this. I was recently at a trade association meeting in Minneapolis where the actual release, the Section 163 process, was a focal point, and it was a panel discussion with members of the FAA and with members of the airport development and airport management. And there were a couple of best-case scenarios that were displayed. One of them was at San Bernardino International. And if you get a, if you do everything right, 90 to 120 days, if it's extremely complicated, it could go up to a year. The key aspect of it is what do the, what does the language in the deeds that have property that was dedicated to the airport say about future use? Are there any restrictions? And that's what a good attorney like Peter Kirsch or Barbie Shalmo at CNS, both of them are on our team, those are the first things they look for. And we, we got excellent, this will go through the Airport District's Office that's here in the Bay Area, and then it'll go back to headquarters for the FAA. I'm going to go out on a limb. I haven't seen the deeds, I haven't seen the language, but we know how to goose these things. And I'm six to nine months.
Yeah. And your best professional educated guess, you know, when, when would you, you know, when would you think at the end of the day, this would be opened and, open and operating for business? What, about a year or a couple of years?
I think it'll take, depending on environmental, I think it'll take 12, 14, 15 months, unless we can, co-processing might be quicker. Maybe because it's a, on city property, maybe it gets goose a little bit quicker. Probably 12 months to go through entitlement, maybe nine to 12 months to go through entitlement. And if we co-process CDs at the same time that we're doing the development application, you know, we can break ground immediately after that. We'll build the entire thing. Right now, we're thinking we're going to build the entire thing on spec. That's a very complicated build, so I would give it 15 to 18 months, and then the tenants will come in and start their TI process. But the shelves should be ready. Mark does all of our construction for us. I think, I think the shelves will be ready in 15 months-ish.
And so that's, you know, you're setting me up quite nicely, because that was my next question about, you know, occupancy. I mean, what, what's your, you know, based on your own expertise in this area, you know, what do you, is, you know, do you see it being occupied immediately? Is there, is the demand that high that, you know, we won't have a problem finding tenants, or you won't have a problem finding tenants?
We would not be willing to build it without tenants if we didn't think the demand was demonstrated, about 7 million square feet of current demand. And again, what we would expect is, is what these companies are looking for is certainly when they can move in. As they're developing their products, they have a good idea when that's going to be ready to go to manufacturing. And they need to say, okay, that timeline of that building corresponds with our timeline, we'll sign the lease. And so there's two pieces of this puzzle, as Carl said, co-processing of the plans, which means as we are doing entitlements, we will have Ware Malcolm start the construction drawings. Now, the entitlements might change the size of a building, which means we need to change the plans, but we're willing to do that. We've done that on our last project. So literally, the day you approve everything, we hopefully will pull a permit that day. We will, then, as we, as tenants can see we're breaking ground, they're willing to sign a lease, and then, as with our last tenant, we were working with Amazon, they'll basically say, we need that part of the building sooner, so we start over there, and as soon as that's done, they're in there as we're moving forward. So if the, if everything aligns and the tenant demand is there, which we feel it is, those things will be up and running and operating as fast as possible. That's how, if we put all this together in the support of the council, we think we can do that.
Yeah. Another question is, and, and forgive me if I did not remember this, if you talked about it at the CAC meeting, but will there be a, an airplane, an actual Tuskegee, one of the, one of the planes that actually...
So Councilmember Salinas...
Is that possible, or I don't know?
As long as Councilmember Zermanio gives me his checkbook, I'll get a P-51 here for you, okay?
So they're expensive.
So the operating P-51 right now goes for around $2.5 to $3 million. I had a very, very good friend down in San Diego at the Ramona Airport who had a P-51D, and I'll just tell a quick story if you don't mind. We were losing the air war in World War II, and the British came up with the original design for the P-51, but because their factories had been bombed to smithereens, they brought it over to the United States. From the day they landed and said, here are the drawings, to the first P-51 coming off the line, 117 days. And that's what changed the air war in World War II. 117 days.
Wow, wow.
We might be a little longer than that.
And you can't build this thing in 117 days, though? Well, so, thank you for that. And just a couple of general comments to conclude. You know, I, and maybe, you know, Director Mary and even, you know, the city manager, you know, this is a, as, the presentation today was slightly different, very similar, there are parallels, slightly different, but better, because I think you're, you're connecting to all of the partners that are, you know, that you've been working with and you are working with. And just your enthusiasm, I thought, maybe this time I actually were doing it in person that, you know, last time we were on Zoom, but, you know, this is certainly, I think, a model and a standard that I think we would hope that all development, you know, all developers go through. And, and, you know, and I would recommend that, you know, just probably as a, as just, you know, as a exercise that we sort of document this process of, you know, partnership developer and partners, community partners process, because I think you have reached out to a lot of groups. I mean, and, and I'll just, quite frankly, you know, the fact that we got the Cal State Hayward Ethnic Studies Department, the Chair of the Ethnic Studies Department, I don't know, but historically, I think this might be the first, you know, partnership of this kind. I don't know, Professor Baham, if, you know...
I think you're right.
Yeah. And so, you know, and I, I see the opportunity with, you know, because Shebang College has an Ethnic Studies Department, and of course, you know, you mentioned K-12, the school district. So the fact that you're including not only our academic institutions, but you're including the disciplines that are, that are home to these experts and, you know, to the folks that study this and teach it, I think is incredible.
We might need a little help with Rotary, though, Councilman.
Was that?
We might need a little help with Rotary.
Yeah. Wow. And, you know, I'll tell you, you know, you have four of us up here at Rotary, so we, you know, we can certainly, we'd have to fight as to, you know, who, who pays for lunch that day, you know, who one of us can...
Actually, it would be, it would be a good presentation.
Yeah, this would be a great presentation.
Maybe invite you to come talk to them.
But I think all the elements are here we're looking for. Community benefit, collaboration, the fact that you mentioned, you know, destination. We've, I know a theme that keeps coming up when we talk about the industrial zone is creating spaces where they are a destination, where, you know, it's just not known as a place, as warehouses, right? It's a place where people can go, engage nightlife, you know, and, and go and, and do things. And here, in this case, it's going to be learning. And of course, you know, partnerships like the Rotary and the Hayward Historical Society. So anyways, I, you know, I expressed it then, and, you know, I think this is a great project. I look forward to it taking shape and moving forward, and, you know, it's, yeah, I think it's great. Thank you for, for coming.
Your guidance.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, thank you.
Okay, well, I also saw this along with my two colleagues here in the chambers as we comprised the airport, the airport, the Council Airport Committee, and, you know, it's pretty similar, I think. I guess a couple of questions. So I think there was something in the, I believe in the staff report about expecting maybe the FAA approval to take as much as nine months. I was going to say the same time it takes to, you know, produce a child, but, but you're saying, you know, we don't really know, because we've seen, we've seen FAA matters go on, but whatever we can do to encourage that process. But so when it said also, I believe it's somewhere in the staff report, that the zoning request would be in one year, is that, is that reflective of the process, the time you think it's going to take to get that FAA approval? Is that what that, or...
We think the zoning can go in the co-processing with us.
So that one-year time, you're, you're, I mean, I, I don't know exactly where that was, but I know...
I would say a reason to wait.
So, okay, because, but it was in the staff report that there will be a zoning request in one year, and I just wondered where, you know, where the one, what the one year, I assumed it was tied to getting approval from the FAA. Then the other question is, what about the Airport Land Use Committee? Do they have to, or is it a commission? Anyway, the Airport Land Use people, they also have to look at this and approve it?
Do you want to take that?
Yes, they typically want to look at development on the airport and in the vicinity of the airport, but I, from what I know right now, I don't think that would be too much of an issue in this case because it's a compatible use.
Okay. I would urge you to reach out to our, you know, to perhaps the members of that commission. I know one of them lives in Hayward and actually is, you know, has also always been a real supporter of the airport, so staff can probably put you in touch there. So I'll just add my, you know, I, I think this, we have, we have tried for years now to get something going there, and I know at one point we had high hopes of saving that building, which has become a, you know, a kind of a landmark, but I think we can all appreciate that that building is not probably salvageable for any, I mean, we put it out there, we've tried, people haven't been able to make it work, and it's very hard to make an old building work this day, these days for modern, you know, for contemporary uses because of, you know, all the needs and, you know, desire we have for the energy efficiencies and things like that. So, so I do appreciate your, your interest in your, your bringing this to us, and really appreciate the inclusion we've, that Tuskegee Airmen Museum. To be right there on Tuskegee Airmen Drive would be just a great asset to our, to our airport, and, you know, inclusion of other historical information about our airport. I'm always interested in history. I know I had the privilege of knowing one of the Tuskegee Airmen who I attended church with many years ago. He's gone now, as I think most of them are at this point, but, you know, what a story, and it's a story that should be told and that we were a part, you know, that Hayward has, you know, has a connection to. So really like the idea of the walking path. People are interested in airports anyway, and I think, you know, it's, people will go there just kind of maybe to see the planes come in and take off to the proximity to one, you know, to our, one of our operators at the airport, Meridian, that's relatively new, is, is a, is a good thing. So yes, I think you're hearing that there is strong support here from the council, and we hope to see this project move along and have it come back to us for a formal vote, but I hope that you got what you needed this evening.
Thank you, Mayor, very much.
Okay. And with that, thank you.
There is, there is one very specific part of that hangar that's... There is, there is one very specific part of that hangar that's going to be saved.
I'm sorry, I didn't under.
There is one very specific part of that big hangar that is going to live on.
That's, that's good to hear. That's good to hear that we can salvage some part of it. And, you know, photos from the past too, I imagine will be part, you know, part of the presentation. I thank the other participants for coming tonight and being supportive. I'm always glad, you know, it's just a great collaboration with education and history and, and the future with whatever is going to happen there. Life sciences, we know, is a really, you know, and advanced manufacturing are important, important industrial uses for our future. And so we wish you well and look forward to hear, to seeing it back for real action.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. And with that, we're going to now move back to our work session item, agenda item four, which is the 2023 Electrification Reach Codes. We'll have information and discussion. And, and again, we're giving our Public Works Director, O'Meara, a workout tonight. But take it away, Mr. O'Meara.
Madam Mayor, this report is going to be given by Eric Pearson, our Environmental Services Manager.
Okay.
Eric?
Thank you, Eric. Mr. Pearson.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. So this report presents some considerations for a new reach code that could be adopted by council later this year. We presented similar reports to the Council Sustainability Committee in March and May this year. And then just a few weeks ago, also to the Planning Commission. So we're seeking council comments tonight before we draft the actual ordinance. And joining us tonight, we have Omar Norzad, our Building Official, Christina Morales, our Housing Manager, Aaron Kim from East Bay Community Energy, and Giuliano Wee from TRC, which is the consulting company working on the model reach codes for the Bay Area. So the reach code is a local ordinance that amends the state building code. Hayward's current reach code was adopted by council in March 2020. And it supports our efforts to end the use of natural gas in buildings. The code also requires additional EV charging infrastructure above and beyond the state requirements. And pictured on the right side of the screen here is the city's webpage that has the current ordinance as well as checklists for developers. The current reach code has three primary components. It requires all new single-family homes and low-rise multifamily buildings to be all-electric. And low-rise means three, up to three stories. And for high-rise residential buildings and commercial buildings, they can be either all-electric or mixed fuel. Although if they're mixed fuel, they have to meet additional solar and energy efficiency requirements. And then the third component is the EV charging infrastructure requirements. So the state building codes are updated on a three-year cycle. The new state code is going to take effect in January 2023. And so to continue our current reach code requirements, a new ordinance would need to be adopted this year in time to be effective in January 2023. The council's strategic roadmap was originally approved in January 2020 and just updated last month. Identifies these three projects that are aimed at reducing our dependency on fossil fuels. And these are directly related to the reach code. Projects C1 and C2 were completed with the adoption of the current reach code. And Project C10 is to explore the feasibility of banning gas in non-residential buildings. And I'll talk more about that in a few minutes. So in 2019 and 2020, staff works closely with East Bay Community Energy and their consultants to prepare the current reach code. This year, a model code is being developed by the same consulting team through a regional collaboration, this time led by East Bay Community Energy, Peninsula Clean Energy, and Silicon Valley Clean Energy. And so this working group has created a website with model codes and resources. And you can see the link here. So in March, we had our first meeting with the Sustainability Committee. We presented the seven different topics. The first one was about new low-rise residential buildings. And the committee agreed to continue the current all-electric requirements. For new non-residential buildings and high-rise residential buildings, the committee supported the elimination of the mixed fuel option, but requested that we maintain some flexibility to allow gas in certain limited exceptions. For accessory dwelling units or ADUs, the committee asked for more information about costs. And we do expect a cost effectiveness study to be coming out next month. So we'll have more information soon. As far as existing buildings go, these are items four, five, and six. Staff recommends that we wait for the next code cycle, given that we need more time to research options and costs. And also, we are currently waiting to see if the Air District might be adopting new rules that would ban the sale of gas appliances. And that would help to spur electrification of existing buildings. And then finally, number seven is the, the committee did indicate a preference for aggressive EV charging requirements, but also asked for more information about costs. So here's a summary of the recommended components for this year's reach code. I'll touch on each of these, but staff is recommending all, the all-electric requirement for, for all building types except for the non-residential category. And the all-electric requirement would be new for high-rise residential and for mixed-use buildings. So as I mentioned, for new low-rise residential buildings, we're recommending that we maintain the current requirement to, to make these all-electric. For new accessory dwelling units, the current code requires that they be all-electric. However, smaller detached units that are less than 400 square feet have been exempt. The reason for that is because a heat pump water heater has a tank. And they do take up more space compared to a tankless gas-fired water heater. However, the Bay Area model code is recommending that all new detached ADUs be all-electric. But we're still waiting on that cost effectiveness study and also researching the availability of small electric water heaters to see what might, might be possible. For new non-residential buildings and high-rise buildings, staff is recommending eliminating that mixed fuel option. We did consider a complete ban for non-residential, or ban on gas for non-residential buildings. But there are certain buildings that still need gas. And we found that developing exceptions for certain industrial or restaurant uses may be problematic. Administering an exception process would be time-consuming for our building division staff. And most new non-residential buildings are built without knowing who the tenant is going to be. So it's difficult to know the occupancy and whether or not gas would be warranted. So staff is recommending that we allow gas in all new non-residential buildings, but that we require these buildings to be electric-ready. Which means that if a gas appliance is installed initially, the building would also has to have the wiring and the panel capacity from, at the time of new construction so that the electric conversion could, could happen easily in the future. And so this would help us to create a, to be recognized in our climate action plan as being a realistic pathway to achieving carbon neutrality by 2045, which is one of our council adopted goals. For non-residential buildings, they would still be subject to strict energy efficiency requirements in the new energy code. And, yes. Then just recently, the Bay Area Air Quality Management District adopted new thresholds of significance to be used in environmental analysis when evaluating new projects that are subject to the California Environmental Quality Act. The thresholds that they're, they're used to determine the significance of an environmental impact. The previous thresholds were numeric, but now they are qualitative due to the state's goal to be carbon neutral by 2045. So the district is recommending that for a new project to not be considered to have a significant impact on the environment, it either has to have no gas or it needs to be consistent with a locally adopted climate action plan. Meaning that it needs to be consistent with the adopted policies and programs that are aimed at reducing greenhouse gas emissions. So the last section here is about EV charging. Currently, we have different requirements for different land use types, being single-family, multifamily, and then non-residential. And we also have different levels of EV charging readiness. So I'll talk about those a bit before we get into the requirements. There are four different power levels. The current reach code only addresses three, but the low-power level two is a new category. But, so level one can give you 30 to 40 miles of range from an overnight charge. Staff is not recommending any level one charging in that it may be good for a plug-in hybrid car. But for a full EV, this level of charging might lead to range anxiety. The low-power level two is a 20-amp circuit, and it can give you 100 to 150 miles of charge over, on an overnight charge. High-power level two can be up to 300 miles for an overnight charge. And then we have a fast charge, direct current fast charge, which could be up to 400 amps, and it can give you more than 125 miles per hour of charge. And these are what you typically find in a, in a commercial setting. Then we have three kinds of readiness. We have EV-capable, which means that there is space in the electric panel and conduit provided to each parking space. Then EV-ready means that you have also installed the wiring and the outlet. And then we have electric vehicle charger installed, or EVCI. And it's also referred to as electric vehicle supply equipment, or EVSE, meaning that the actual charger is installed as well. So this graph shows that it's significantly cheaper to install charging at the time of new construction, shown in blue, compared to the time of a retrofit, shown in orange. And this is showing a couple of different examples for multifamily projects and also an office building. So increasing the code requirements for charging for new construction can save a significant amount of money for a building owner upfront rather than waiting for future demand. So the current requirement, the state code is increasing for, for office buildings and general non-residential buildings. The state code is going to increase from 6% to 25%. Of spaces must have some level of EV charging readiness. Our current reach code requires 50% for, for office space and 15% for non-office. We're recommending that we keep the office category requirement the same. And for non-office, we increase from 15% to 20%. For single-family homes and townhomes, the current requirement in the reach code is that there should be two EV-ready spaces per dwelling unit. And we're recommending no changes for that. For multifamily homes, the current reach code requires 25% level-two capable spaces and 75% level-two EV-ready. The new state code is increasing from about 10% to 40%. Of spaces must have some level of readiness. And, but staff's recommendation is to go with the option B here, which is 80% of level-two low-power EV-ready spaces and 20% with chargers installed. Here we have some cost estimates included. The costs of meeting the EV charging requirements for multifamily development has been a concern. The Bay Area Model Reach Code developed by the, the Regional Working Group recommends 60% of the spaces be level-one to minimize costs. But as noted earlier, staff is not recommending level-one. We feel these are going to be obsolete in the near future. So our consultants, TRC, who's with us tonight, they provided us with some cost estimates for a couple of options that we were considering. Option A would be a larger requirement. And then option B is the, the lesser requirement that I mentioned with 80% low-power level-two. And just a note here that TRC did make these estimates, but noted that, you know, in terms of the percent of total construction cost that's indicated at the bottom row here, these may be significantly more when accounting for transformer upgrades. These are not accounted for because they're, they're not always required, but they, they could be required and they would more likely be required with the option A, charging readiness. So for affordable housing, developers of affordable housing have found that the costs of installing EV charging can be particularly challenging. We understand that affordable housing developers are often cobbling together different sources of funding to make a project pencil out. And so in addition to the costs for land and construction, many affordable housing developers are also providing wraparound services that are significant ongoing costs. So these developers are very sensitive to the requirements that add, any requirements that add costs. And these additional costs can increase the need for public subsidies. So staff is seeking the council's comments regarding a possible exemption or lesser requirements for EV charging just for affordable housing developments. And so we have here some different reasons or arguments in favor of an exemption. First, that if affordable housing projects are exempted, they could still be incentivized to install more charging, especially for those projects that need city funding. Those that do not provide the charging initially could add the charging later. And possibly when the project is refinanced, which is typically after the first 15 years. Secondly, these projects would still be required to meet the state code, which means that they still have to have at least 40% of the parking spaces have some level of charging readiness. Third, these projects, if there is an exemption for the, the charging, it would be consistent with other exemptions, given that affordable housing is currently exempted from the traffic impact fee, park fees, sometimes SEQA, and they're often given streamlined permit processing. And then lastly, our housing element is currently being updated. And the state of California is soon going to be reviewing our draft document. And they're going to be looking for policies that help to facilitate housing production. So then we have some reasons against an exemption or reasons for requiring that EV charging. The first is equity. Residents in affordable housing should have the same amenities as residents in market-rate housing. And secondly is the demand. We expect a lot more people to be driving EVs, given that by 2035, all new cars sold in California are going to be EVs. That's only 12 to 13 years from now. And affordable housing restrictions are typically in place for more than 50 years. As far as exemptions being consistent for different, different regulations, most other exemptions that apply to affordable housing are more financial and benefit the developer, whereas EV charging is an amenity that can directly benefit a residence. And then finally, EV charging is much cheaper to install at the time of new construction compared to retrofitting in the future. And not providing the chargers with initial construction could be a missed opportunity. So earlier this year, the Bay Area Regional Working Group held two public workshops. We helped to advertise these workshops to developers and builders in Hayward. We also talked individually with affordable housing developers. We met with the Chamber of Commerce in, earlier this month. Some comments we received there are that there, there should be exceptions for certain uses in certain industries. We also talked with commercial and industrial developers, who again, said that they would like to see exceptions, especially for life science and biotech industries. And so at this point, our anticipated next steps are to develop an ordinance and present that to the Council Sustainability Committee next month, or I'm sorry, in July, or it is next month. next month. And then it could be coming back to council in October with an ordinance that could be adopted at that time. So that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer questions.
Thank you for that. And I know the Sustainability Committee heard this earlier as well. So Councilmember Armentio?
Thank you, Mayor. Eric, thank you very much for that good report. Let's see, three short related questions. We will allow gas and require elective readiness to new non-residential and high-rise residential buildings. When do you think that we can ban gas altogether?
I think it may be something that could be done with the next code cycle. I mentioned that the state building code is updated every three years, and so the REACH code is on that same renewal schedule, and so it's something we could certainly consider, again, three years from now.
Okay.
Okay, Councilmembers Armentio, I'm sorry, I'm going to interrupt you a minute because I should have opened public comment, and we do actually have a request to speak.
Yes.
So we'll come back to you first after that, okay? So I'm going to go ahead and open public comment on this item. And we do have, we do have one hand raised right now, and that's Igor Dragub.
Hi, Mayor and councilmembers. This is Igor, speaking with my Sierra Club hat on, where I serve as chair, co-chair of the SFA Chapter's Energy and Climate Committee. And as you know, we have a history of supporting REACH codes, gas bans, anything that can be done to decarbonize our buildings and other infrastructure. And I want to applaud Hayward for being part of leading the way on this issue. We, you may have heard the good news that the city of LA just voted to become, I believe, the 57th jurisdiction in the nation to adopt a REACH code. In terms of the recommendations, while we don't have specific recommendations, we generally support the most proactive possible REACH code that can be done around decarbonization. And I want to specifically call out and support element three on new non-residential and high-rise residential buildings, given that under the amendments to Title 24, state energy code that are going online in January of next year, this will allow for, this will extend the solar mandate to high-rise residential, so taller than three stories, as well as your recommendations on EV charging infrastructure, given that the state, as you pointed out, is mulling, actually being even more aggressive at requiring 100% car sales, new car sales to be zero emission vehicles by 2045, and the Sierra Club is actually calling for that to happen five years earlier. And then finally, while we don't have a recommendation specifically on the whether to exempt affordable housing, I can give you a little bit of our operational experience in Berkeley and other jurisdictions where no such exemptions exist. And frankly, many affordable housing types that are being built now are zero parking or minimal parking anyway. And then the sky hasn't fallen. We have actually created, we're now constructing or have opened for habitability hundreds of not thousands of new units of affordable housing over the past few years, since 2019, when we adopted our gas ban. And it has worked out, and we have worked with nonprofit affordable housing developers and land trusts to do that. So thank you so very much for your continued leadership.
Thank you. Is there any other member of the public who would like to speak on this item? Not seeing any hands raised at the moment, so we will go back to council member, we'll close public comment and go back to Councilmembers Armentio for your next question.
Thank you, Mayor. Eric, so back where we were, so maybe in three years, we can begin to ban gas altogether, correct?
Yes. Sometime, okay. All right. Do we know of any cities in California that have done this? Ban gas? Entirely, yes. There are a handful, but I, you know, Berkeley is one that made an ex-plead ban, and they've, they're currently challenging a lawsuit. I believe Morgan Hill is another. There's several, I just don't remember the names of the communities.
All right, so it's good to know. All right, and the third one, when can we, I imagine that it also happened in California, what, maybe two or three years, California will ban it altogether too? Do you see that happening?
Probably not an outright ban altogether, but we do expect that there's going to be more regulation of the gas appliances, and that's likely to affect both new construction and replacement of appliances in existing buildings.
Okay. Eric, thank you very much. As a member of the Sustainability Committee, I do support this, so thank you. Thank you for your good work.
Any other council, councilmember Lambnun?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to the committees that have been reviewing this, and of course, to our staff for the excellent work always, stewarding the environmental resources in our community. And of course, these issues reach far beyond Hayward. Overall, I'm supportive. I appreciate that this is a very thoughtful approach to this issue, and I think does a good job of balancing costs, all the competing factors. And then wondering, is there, is the building or including the infrastructure for electricity, is that enough of a mitigation for the continued use of gas? Do we need to consider anything else, sort of as we would consider any other environmental mitigation?
In terms of the gas appliances that might be installed at the time of new construction, we could look at a requirement that would be, you know, that would impact the replacement of those appliances at the end of their useful life. Or, yeah, there are, there's a few different approaches, but there's, and there's some communities that are looking at just a complete, you know, capping of gas lines at a certain point, given that we do need to reach carbon neutrality by 2045. So that's, that's a long-term possibility.
Okay. Yeah, I appreciate that we're not entirely there yet either. So having some phased-in approaches, as you just described, is really interesting. So I appreciate that. I also wanted to appreciate the outreach that's happened. It's very thorough, and I know this is an ongoing process, so thank you for that. The last thing I'm thinking about is, in terms of, there was a question about affordable housing, and I think, as Mr. Dragub said, you know, we're moving towards, towards not having gas automobiles. The equity arguments that were laid out in the staff report, I think, are well-made. And I think there are ways, while I'm all for building affordable by design, I also think there are ways to mitigate the costs of this, and so doing it upfront, just as we would, as we've been recommending for solar and other kinds of issues, makes sense to me. So, you know, I'm willing to hear from the affordable housing community as this moves forward, if there's something I've missed in that. But as it is, I'm supportive of the recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, I'll just say, I really appreciate the staff's, listening to all the comments they've gathered over time, as I said, the Sustainability Committee, and, you know, your outreach to the public, the Planning Commission, and that I think you have come up with, you know, some very reasonable recommendations. My choice would be to go with the stronger ones, actually. And on the issue of affordable housing, I would tend to agree that we, you know, primarily, an important thing to note is the, you know, as you have noted, the vastly increased cost of retrofitting a building later, you know, rather than doing it at the beginning. So perhaps what we need to look at is whether, you know, there will be, there's a possibility of getting a grant program going, you know, maybe the state has money available to help offset any excessive costs in new construction of affordable housing, but I think those things need to be there. And I think, you know, there was a Planning Commission comment, I believe, that not just making new buildings charger-ready, but really installing the chargers. So I mean, I would go for that, too. I want to make it as strong as possible. We need to do that with, you know, I think that there are, there are some specific commercial reasons for continued use of natural gas. I do agree with the, with the suggestion that we tackle some of that, especially things in existing buildings, in the next cycle, rather than try to do it all now. I think, I think, but I think dealing with new buildings is really important, and I think requiring it as much as possible because of the costs of retrofitting later. And we know this is, we know this train is rolling, and it's, you know, it's not going to stop. I wanted to ask a question about, I didn't understand, there was a comment, I believe in this, and I have put down here on page 11 of the staff report, that multifamily property owners want EV charging to be on the utility side of the electric bill. I didn't quite understand that comment, or what was being asked for there.
I think the concern is that if the electric meter for the parking area is a common meter that's paid for by the property manager or the owner, then they're responsible for the cost of the electricity for the, for the resident to charge their car.
So how would, how would that change it? It would be, you know, would the person actually using, you know, getting the charge, pay for it in some way, or?
I think there could be a mechanism for the resident to pay a fee for the use of the charger that would compensate the property manager, but, or it could just be, you know, factored into the rent if that's an amenity, just like other amenities on a multifamily property that are provided for residents. So I think there's a few different ways of handling it.
Okay, thanks. I, yeah, I guess what they're saying is they don't want to have to deal with the, you know, the billing for this, and would prefer that it, somehow it be set up to, for the people who are getting the charge, to be charged for it at the time. And then on the issue of the ADUs, I didn't see, I don't know if I appreciated much discussion about, I know there was a lot of talk about the 400 square feet, but what about the issue of detached versus attached ADUs?
So we're not addressing attached ADUs at this point, given that sometimes they will share hot water lines, or maybe if it's a small attached ADU, they may be using the same water heater, or they're tying into the same, you know, ducted heating system. So we felt it makes more sense at this point to address the detached ADUs, given that they have their own systems, independent systems.
All right.
If I could add, the, when we're looking at the units that are less than 400 square feet for detached, we did take a look at the permit history over the last six or seven years. There's been more than 300 ADUs permitted, and probably less than 10% have been detached and less than 400 square feet. So this category that's in question right now is relatively a small, small part of the pie.
Okay, well, with that, thank you for all the work on this, and I think the staff, I'm inclined to go with the recommendations the staff has made on most of these things. I think, you know, we need to push as hard as we can, but I appreciate that there are some places where we can go a little slower because it's more difficult to deal with. But on new construct, but what you're really focusing on here is new construction, and it's really important that we do this in new construction. So this is a work session, it'll come back to us, as you said, for approval later there. Oh, I do see another hand up. I'm sorry, Councilmember Marquez.
That's okay, thank you, Mayor. Just since we had reviewed this on Sustainability Committee, just wanted to hear comments from my colleagues. But I'm in support of staff's approach. I do appreciate the Sierra Club calling in, and maybe we could put them on our distribution list, just to keep them informed of future Sustainability Committee meetings. And wanted to know, once this ordinance is adopted, how many years is it in place, and when would we be revisiting any updates?
So if a new REACH code is adopted this year, it'll take effect January 2023, and it would be in place to the end of 2025. So most likely, we would be going through this process again in 2025, have a new updated ordinance take effect in January 26.
Okay, so there would be time, if we're not as aggressive as we like to be in all areas, we would be revisiting this in a shorter window span. It's not like 10 years out or anything substantial. And then can we also, I agree with the comments and reaching out to our affordable housing partners, I think it makes sense. I don't obviously know every person's funding source, but my understanding is a lot of them get huge substantial tax credits, and I would imagine that this could be something that they could potentially look into. So I definitely would like us to have that conversation. If it can't be done this early, go around, then definitely for the next, the next cycle would be my preference. And then when would this be coming? This is, so the update's going to come to Sustainability Committee in July, and then when will it come back to council for adoption?
And then back to council in either October or early November.
Okay, and effective date for January 23. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. No other questions or comments? We can move on to the next item. Thank you very much, Mr. Pearson, and for all the work, and we'll look forward to hearing it at, well, at Sustainability Committee and later at council to pass it. So with that, now we have come to item number six on our agenda, which is a presentation by Townsend Public Affairs, which is our legislative advocacy firm, who, and they are going to provide an update and overview of the city's legislative advocacy efforts and upcoming relevant legislation. And so we're going to start this one with City Manager McAdoo.
And first, I'm going to apologize to council. This is actually supposed to be a work session. There's no action required of the council. It unfortunately got listed under Legislative Business, so you are welcome.
Well, it is legislative.
It is Legislative Business, it is, yes. You are welcome to accept the report, but there's no need to take any formal action. With that, I am actually going to turn it over. We have two representatives from our state lobbying firm Townsend, Christopher Townsend, who's the president, and Eric Thronson, who is our local representative who supports us most directly. So Dustin, are you going to start the presentation, or are we kicking it straight over to Townsend?
I mean, I think you pretty much stole all the thunder.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. Introduce Eric, and just, you know, thank him for the hard work that he's been doing for the city. He will provide council with a short presentation that will sort of highlight some of that good work that they've been doing, and definitely looking forward to any feedback that council has, so. Eric, go ahead and take us away. You're muted, Eric.
And so am I. This is Christopher Townsend. Can you guys see me okay?
Yes.
I just wanted to start briefly with Mayor Holliday and the members of the council, City Manager. We really appreciate this opportunity to take a brief moment to give you an update about what's going on. I just wanted to make a comment. I just wanted to make a comment. I founded this firm 25 years ago, and you, the city of Hayward has been a stalwart client, one of the hallmarks. You know, we like to brag about representing you and the success we have. We're very proud to be a part of the Hayward community. And I just want to thank you for those opportunities you've given us and your faith in us to continue us for another year. There's been a lot of exciting things that have happened, but more importantly, the best of, the best that's left is in the future. So with that, I'm joined by Eric Thronson. He's Deputy Director at TPA. He's your direct client manager. And with that introduction, Eric, you can take it away. And if not, I have their tap.
I'm, I'm wondering, it looks like he's trying to share his screen, but I'm, I think we're getting some, just a, maybe there's some network issues going on.
I just got a message from Eric that his computer froze, which is weird.
It looks like he may be back now, okay.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Oh, my gosh. Let me try this again. I'm sorry, let's see. Let me see if I can, am I sharing my screen now?
No, I mean.
Not, not yet, we can't see, no.
Eric, I've got your presentation. Would you like me to share?
Yeah, yes, please. I'm sorry, I just don't know, like, my computer just froze up. I heard all about the Tuskegee Airmen and the REACH, but I'm very excited, and all of a sudden, I couldn't, I couldn't present. I don't know what happened. But you can hear me now, is that true?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great.
And I think our, Mr. Clausen is going to try to share the presentation, and here we go. Yes, there we are.
All right, there it is. Okay, well, I will just have to say, next slide, thank you so much, Mr. Clausen. But not yet, we're starting at the beginning. I guess, I think I heard Christopher give his presentation. It was all breaking up, but he, was he already, did he already participate?
Yes.
You missed all the good things I said about you, so, sorry.
Well, I could say good things about you, and we could just go back and forth all day, but instead, we will move on to the agenda. I apologize profusely. I'm sorry, Madam Mayor and councilmembers, please forgive me. So our agenda today will cover the funding achievements we've won for the city, a state budget update, as well as policy bills that interest the city, and a quick look ahead for the rest of the year. Next slide, please. So TPA has worked diligently to secure funding for the city of Hayward. It may be a little hard to see amidst the piles of cash on the slide, but we have successfully brought money to the city through both grant-writing efforts and state budget earmarks. Next slide. This slide is not meant to be readable, but it is simply a graphic representation of the many achievements we've garnered on your behalf over the years. Next slide. So this is the highlight of the section of this presentation, the important numbers for today. Since 2009, TPA has helped the city secure more than $54 million to fund all sorts of local priorities, including housing, transportation, public safety, and community facilities. In fact, last year, we worked with Assembly Member Quirk's office to secure over $1.6 million in the state budget for the Hayward Navigation Center and the South Hayward Youth Family Center. That is funding we didn't have to compete for. It isn't grant funding. It is money that comes straight out of the state's general fund and into our projects. This year, again with Assembly Member Quirk, we are working to secure $5.4 million from the state budget for the city's Scattered Site Affordable Housing Project, that has unfortunately been deemed ineligible, at least for now, for the Project Home Key Program. I'll talk more about how we're trying to address the home key issue a little later. Next slide, please. So briefly on the state budget, here's where we are at this point. A basic budget framework has been passed and sent to the governor in order to meet the constitutional deadline of June 15. More negotiations are expected, however, and over the course of the next two months, this budget bill will be amended by what we affectionately call Budget Bill Juniors. With these juniors, we, there will be compromises on things like the governor's care court, the inflation relief rebates, the larger transportation package, hopefully, and member budget requests. So we will see what shakes out over the next several weeks. The most provocative thing to know about the state budget is its enormous size this year, roughly $300 billion in total spending. That's a lot. To put it in perspective, that is more than $100 billion greater than the state budget was just two years ago, and significantly more than double the state budget a decade ago. Even more staggering, the governor is projecting a $97 billion operating subsidy, of which $49 billion are considered available for discretionary spending. Those are billions with a B. This means the state is expecting to collect roughly $100 billion more than it needs to sustain all of its programs and spendings. And even after dedicating half of that excess to reserves and paying down debt, there is still roughly $50 billion to spend on rebates to Californians, legislatively proposed local projects, and other one-time priorities for the state. We will keep you updated on all the budget actions through the summer, but surmise it to say that there will be a lot, because that is a lot of money. Next slide, please. So in addition to funding, we're actively working on several policy issues important to the city. For example, we've been very engaged in legislation related to cracking down on loud vehicle noise, like this poor guy who is just fed up. As you know, this is a tricky topic. It's, the intent, the intent is to catch those who willfully modify or purchase illegally loud vehicles without burdening low-income residents or others who unintentionally operate vehicles that make too much noise. We've engaged on, and the city has supported, a couple of bills trying to address this challenge. We will continue to represent the city on this and other issues being considered through, by the legislature throughout the year. Next slide, please. We've also been very engaged in housing issues on behalf of the city. You know, housing, it's a kind of a big deal. Right now, we are working with city staff to move the needle on Project Home Key Guidelines in order to create space for applications such as our Scattered Sites Proposal. We're talking to agency and governor's staff to make sure they understand the benefits of this model and how Project Home Key can accommodate innovation such as ours. Next slide. Over the past year, we've drafted and submitted extensive grant applications on behalf of the city, including two federal raise grant applications for the third phase of the Mission Boulevard project. We're hoping to bring to the city almost $7 million for that project and expect to hear in July of our success. Next slide. Finally, a look ahead for the next year. As always, we will tirelessly continue to hunt for more state funding, as well as identify grant opportunities that are a good fit for the city. Next slide. We stay on top of legislation that is important to you all the way through the process. That means that if we are ever unsuccessful, we conduct a postmortem and report back to your staff why we were unable to achieve the legislative aims we sought, and make plans for how we're going to do it next year. Next slide. And to wrap it up, we have to talk about the change in the state legislature that's coming this fall. There are going to be 27 new members after the election in November, as some members term out and others have chosen not to run for reelection. That is nearly one quarter of the sitting members, which is going to have impacts on priorities, leadership, and overall direction. Newly drawn districts will also influence Sacramento. Next slide. Of course, both of your representatives are changing. As you can see, if you flip from this slide to the next, I'm not sure if you can do that for me, Mr. Clausen, but the representative districts are changing as well. If you can, if you can notice as you flip back and forth, you can see how both your assembly member and your state senator will represent a little different set of constituents in 2023 than they do right now. One thing we will be doing over the coming year is developing relationships with your new representatives and ensuring that Hayward remains an important piece of home for whomever ends up in those seats. With that, you can switch to the last slide. I just want to thank you again for the opportunity to present today and work on your behalf. I apologize once again for my computer. I will, I will try to do better next time, and I'm happy to try and answer any questions you might have related to legislation or, or any other topic.
Thank you. I must say, I thought that picture of the, the person screaming was a picture of a local official like me upon hearing the latest, you know, legislative proposal by a member of our legislature. I mean, I think I have looked somewhat like that in the past, when I have heard about some of the bills that are being proposed. But we do thank you for your advocacy, so I'm going to ask if, I do see we have some councilmembers who want to ask questions. Councilmember Andrews?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Thorson, Thronson, for your presentation. And I wanted to ask you about a meeting that we had with Hayward PD and the chief regarding license paper plates. I was considering submitting a referral regarding license paper plates, as it's thought to be contributing to some of the, the crime that we're seeing in our local retailers, and understand that there is some legislation that is being crafted right now, possibly by an assembly member right now, and wanted to see how does that work fit within your, your goals looking ahead?
Well, thank you, councilmember. Yeah, I really appreciated that conversation we had a few, few days ago. And as I'd mentioned to you before, I actually worked in Senate Transportation Committee and then the Assembly Transportation Committee in the legislature, and, and these temporary license plate bills were pushed for years. And for years, committee staff pushed back pretty hard, trying to point out the fact that being able to print a license plate on your printer and put it on your car could lead to all sorts of outcomes that you might not be considering when, when, when moving forward with, with such a proposal. Unfortunately, as I mentioned to you, like almost all legislative ideas, when they get heard enough times, they eventually become law. And we, you know, we, we fight a, a battle all the time for, for common sense and, and not always win. But in this case, I really appreciate that you brought this issue to our attention, and that, so I started making calls yesterday about this issue. I haven't found anyone who has active legislation on this item. It is certainly an item that people are talking about, and I could see it being a, a, a pretty big proposal next spring, when, when legislation is reintroduced. At this time in the legislative cycle, it's really hard to take a brand-new idea like this and tackle something this big. I'm, I'm hoping to talk to Public Safety and Transportation Committee staff and get an informational hearing this fall, so that we can really kind of dig in, because that would lay the found, you know, the, the foundation for, for a proposal, for legislative proposal in the spring. You know, the, the discussion had already been had. We found, you know, how, you know, how impactful this seems to be for various retailers, as you've mentioned, and, and other, you know, municipalities all over the state. And that, that's really the strategy we're going for with that, but I really appreciate you bringing it to my attention. I was just frankly, honestly, waiting for someone to bring this up, because I, I had a feeling, you know, six or eight years ago, that this might become an issue at some point, so.
Well, unfortunate, it's unfortunate I fulfilled that dream. I was hoping that it wouldn't be something that would be accomplished, but thank you for that. So I guess we'll just keep an eye on that. And then fireworks, is there anyone talking about fireworks? Because it is something that is really impacting our community and our quality of life, and, you know, the next city over is, I won't say who, is allowing fireworks, and we're over here struggling, so just wanted to see if there's anything happening with the state.
That is a great question, councilmember. I don't know of anything, but I'm happy to look more into fireworks as an issue and see what I can find out and report back to you.
All right, thank you.
Yes, thank you. And Councilmember Marquez?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation from Eric and Christopher. I can't read the font on your screen. It says establish. What year? I just was curious how long your firm?
We were founded in 1998, so we will be celebrating our 25th anniversary next year.
Congratulations.
Christopher was only 17. It's amazing.
Thank you for your great work. It's impressive to see the amount of dollars. One of the questions I always ask when we adopt our annual budget is, I want to see how much grant money we're bringing in. So this answers that question, because I know, along with your efforts and staff are very aggressive and competing for any dollar on the table, and this was quantified tonight for us tonight. So thank you so much for those efforts. You had mentioned, when you're not successful, you do a debriefing. Can you kind of give us an example of one of those instances?
Sure, yeah. So, you know, we may end up talking about one of these later today, I think, later tonight. So sometimes, for a variety of reasons, bills don't make it through the legislative process. You know, of course, there are political reasons, there are policy reasons, there are committee staff who just have particular issues with the bill, as I might have mentioned with the temporary license plates. We, you know, we'll go back and find out, but what, what was missing? What, what didn't we do? What could we have done differently? And, and, you know, there are oftentimes answers. I have to tell you, as an, you know, my experience in, as a legislative staffer, how few people actually ever do that, but we, as an office, make it, make it a point, because we want to be successful. We want to, in the end, you know, reach the goal. And you, you can't do that if you just keep throwing the same, you know, I don't know, the same ball at the, at the wall, right? You gotta, you've got to learn what, where the problems came from and, and adapt, and that's, that's, that's what we do.
Great. And then help me understand, in terms of what your firm focuses on, are you getting that information through our strategic roadmap? Like, just help me understand when you meet and confer with the city manager and kind of decide on, these are the priorities for the upcoming year?
Sure, well, so every year, you, you, the council adopts a legislative platform. We, we help put it together that every two, you know, every two years, the legislative session is a two-year session. So in 20, in, in the fall of 2020, into the spring of 2021, we, we helped, you know, we helped your staff and you develop a legislative platform, and that directs the way that we follow bills. We look for bills that are important, like, for example, you know, you, you have, as one of your legislative priorities, opposing state, you know, unfunded mandates. It's a pretty good thing to oppose as a city, of course. And so, you know, so we, we keep an eye out for those types of things. When those things come up, we, we provide, every month, we provide a, a monthly report to staff, and in that staff is included a, a list of bills that we've identified that we think are important to the city, that fit the legislative platform that you guys have adopted, and then get direction from the city's staff to take positions if, if that is necessary. That's, that's pretty much the process.
If I could add to that, with regarding grants, by the way, you mentioned grants, there's a similar related process there, because if, many grant programs might have two or more cycles of the course of period. So if we, if we write a grant with the city, and that grant's unsuccessful, we'll get feedback, we'll meet with the project managers at the, the agencies, we'll find out, you know, what went well, what didn't go well, what we would need to change if we wanted to be successful, but then we would bring that back to the city manager and staff, and they would, they'll give us the direction, okay, let's go for it again, or not. So if that makes sense, that's how it works. And we find that works well if we go again, because we built that relationship with the project manager, and they've kind of told us what we should do, and you build that sense of ownership with them, and it, it, it makes it harder for them to find reasons not to fund it the, the next round, so.
Okay, thank you for that. And then city manager, I don't know why I'm not recalling this information. I know we've reviewed this, the legislative advocacy information, but when we do that, when we come up with the plan, are we doing that as just a legislative item, or is it a work session? I honestly do not recall the steps, so can you please remind me?
I think this last time, we, it was a legislative item. It was earlier this spring, because I, maybe it might have been last fall, because our...
Was it this year?
Yeah, it was our, our former management fellow, Terrence Kandel, prepared the update. So I'm trying, and he, I'm trying to remember when he took his new job, but anyway, it's been within the last year, because he was here with us and he prepared it. But I believe that the council did adopt that in a legislative business item. Usually, we'll bring it in a work session, see if the council has any feedback, and then maybe, if, if we do it that way, then we usually will bring it back on consent. But I think this one, we just brought straightforward as a legislative item.
Okay, I would like to propose in the future that we do bring it back as a work session. I just think this is extremely valuable. It's obviously yielding a lot of results, but I just want to have this more on the radar for myself, so.
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you, and I apologize. It doesn't demean the great work you're doing, it's just, we've been doing a lot in the last couple of years, and everything's kind of a blur. Thank you, and I apologize. It doesn't demean the great work you're doing. It's just, we've been doing a lot in the last couple of years, and everything's kind of a blur. So I apologize that I wasn't recalling all the specifics. I want to thank Councilmember Andrews for her advocacy on the license plate reader, as well as issue, as well as fireworks, and happy to hear about the vehicles that are using those modified, I don't know, mufflers, I don't even know exactly what they are, but they're obnoxious, and they wake people up in the middle of the night, and along with that issue, also the issue of donuts. And I'm just wondering if there is any effort. One of my biggest pet peeves with the state is we can see the issues with our unsheltered population, and I just don't understand how cities have gotten away for decades with not approving affordable housing, or just a very narrow focus, like seniors, like, "We'll allow seniors to live in our community, but we don't care about anybody else." So are there any efforts being made to ensure that affordable housing is being built for all individuals? That's one question. And then just want to know if there's any type of discussion with respect to mandating navigation centers in every city in California? So if you have any information related to those topics?
Sure, I just want to write that down before I forget. Because I do not know about mandating navigation centers, so I will have to get back to you to see if there's any, anyone working on that. So I wanted to write it down before I forget. As far as affordable housing, yes, there is a lot of work being done on affordable housing. As you know, it's a little bit difficult for the state to usurp local control and force affordable housing to be built. They have, they have a lot of structures in place. I think the mayor would be able to describe A-BAG in a pretty, probably pretty fond light, but, you know, so there are, there are ways that the state has mandated regions to spread affordable housing at all levels to all, you know, to all of the communities within the regions. And it is, it's called the RENA process, Regional Housing Needs Assessment. And, you know, and then there, the bigger problem, I think that you know and everyone knows, is how do you fund affordable housing? And the state has, you know, because of all the money that they've been collecting over the last several years, has actually dedicated quite a bit, billions and billions of dollars toward affordable housing. Unfortunately, as you know, and we all know, I mean, it's a drop in the bucket. We've been able to build, you know, in the, in the tens of thousands of affordable housing units or units for untransitional housing for our unhoused neighbors, which is not meeting our millions of unhoused neighbors' needs, clearly. And that is just a problem that, you know, the state continues to wrestle with. And I, you know, I'm happy to provide with, you know, provide you at another time, like, an extensive list of all of the things that the state has been trying to do on housing and affordable housing, but it is, it is a lot. Is it effective? That is a very different question.
Okay. Thank you for your comments tonight and the presentation, and appreciate the great work you're doing on behalf of our residents and the ongoing partnership. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would just add to that, that we will be dealing quite a bit this year with these states, you know, mandates for, you know, cities to build affordable housing when we take up our housing element that we're, you know, required to update and address those RENA numbers that we have been given to, you know, to at least zone for, not actually build. And I think that the state has taken a lot of, you know, some not-so-welcome, even here, actions to, you know, to, it's a constant battle with local control. But, you know, I will point out, the Attorney General, I believe, recently went after a Bay Area community that just, that wanted to declare itself all a mountain lion habitat or something like that. So I think they do come after local governments. Councilmember Lambon?
Go ahead, Councilmember Marquez.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I did have one more thing. I apologize. Is there any discussion about bringing back redevelopment since we have this? Are we going to actually produce this housing and get it built?
That is a great question. It is, it is certainly a topic that gets discussed quite a bit. The idea of trying to bring back redevelopment. It is, frankly, I think, very politically difficult to imagine that it could happen anytime soon. The state is finding alternative ways to try to fund affordable housing that does not include redevelopment, and I think that's probably the direction that they'll continue to move.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So Councilmember Lambon?
Thank you, Mayor. So thank you for the report and the work, obviously. I wanted to build on a couple of things I heard from my colleagues was certainly to Councilmember Marquez's point about affordable housing and the discussion there. I think one of the challenges that we're seeing at the city is that so much of the, of that work that you referenced the state doing is really focused on rental housing. And not only is it, is it not a very efficient way to create affordable housing, there's a lot of leakage to it, but also that it doesn't really fundamentally change the equations that were created by redlining and other discriminations. And so, you know, hopefully, there are some coalitions building around how we get at ownership, how we get away from the tax increment financing in the way it's currently done. Clearly, there's some value to that, but the rents for those properties tend to be higher even than the cost of living allocation or increases, so it's just challenging there. I see you nodding, so I appreciate that. And it's part of a much longer discussion, which is why I'm not really doing that as a question, but happy to have questions or a conversation in the future about that. And I appreciate, as Councilmember Marquez said, Councilmember Andrews' leadership on the paper license plates issue, and I'm glad that you guys are convening some conversation around that. And I'll echo the comments that were also made about fireworks. One of the other things that has come up in the past is the state colleges and universities paying for fire services. They pay for police services, but they don't pay for fire, and I know our city has dug into that issue a lot, but yeah, it's one of those things. Is there, do you have any sense of a status on AB 256, the Racial Justice for All Act? Last I heard, it was in suspense.
That's correct, yeah. Yeah, the AB 256, that was a bill I was gonna, I'd mentioned, or I'd hinted at earlier when I said, you know, I bet we talk about, the process, the legislative process is difficult for bills. It is intentionally, I mean, and some would say it's not quite difficult enough, because we end up getting several thousand bills signed in a legislative session. But unfortunately, politics can play a big hand in how bills make it through the legislature, even really great policies like AB 256. And so AB 256 was held, it's an assembly bill, they made it all the way through the assembly, made it through the Policy Committee in the Senate, and then went to Senate Appropriations Committee, where it was, it was held under submission, which means the, you know, Senate Appropriations Chair, Mr. Portantino, decided that the bill wouldn't move forward, and that was the end of that bill. It is, when we talk about bills in the legislature, we talk about bills that are dead, and bills that are dead, dead. And bills that are held on suspense in Appropriations Committee, we typically refer to as dead, dead bills, they can't be brought back. I mean, there is no rule that they can't be brought back into, into life. But any, any committee that gets a bill that was held under submission in an Appropriations Committee won't set it. Just, it's just like an unspoken understanding by all chairs. However, this is the end of a two-year session, this coming up, August 31st, and so a new session begins in January, and every dead, dead bill has a new day. So a bill that doesn't make it through, you know, through, off the suspense, suspense, or a vetoed bill, even vetoed bills come back every once in a while. But bills that are held on suspense, they're just, they just don't move. And so, you know, we hope that Mr. Colrow will take up the mantle again next, next spring and move forward with this, but, or someone will. But I think that AB 256's life is probably, probably done for this year.
I know we'll have more discussion about that bill later, but I just wanted to understand the status of it now. I know the League of Women Voters is pushing for it as well, so I appreciate the information. Thank you. Couple of other things real quick. One, is there anything, as you talked about monitoring the budget and especially the surplus, is there any thought that some of that may come to local projects in some way or another?
Yes, absolutely. So that $5.4 million that we're asking, you know, Mr., we've asked Assemblymember Quirk to be involved in, you know, help, he has put it forward to the Budget Committee as one of his priorities for the Scattered Site Affordable Housing Project. That, you know, so now what happens is, I guess I was, I was, I was a bit, I was very quick in how the budget has been worked out these years, this past couple of years. There is this budget framework that the legislature passes before June 15th, because if they don't pass it, they don't get, they stop being paid. So they pass a thing, and that thing has a bunch of line items in it, appropriations of large numbers, you know, a large amount of money in each of these line items that are to be determined, essentially, and that, but, and those, those get filled in by these budget bill juniors. One of those line items in the current budget that was passed yesterday is $3 billion for legislative priorities. So they have set aside $3 billion at this point of that, of that surplus, operating surplus, that they, that they will then fill in with legislative priorities, like Mr. Quirk's 5.4 million, and, you know, every member has a list, as you can imagine. So we, what we did was, we worked with the city to identify what their priorities were for us to approach your representatives, Senator Wykowski and Assemblymember Quirk, like every other city and, and, you know, and, you know, public agency in their district, in their district. Everyone came forward and said, "Hey, no, no, these are the really important ones." And then they, those members had to decide which ones they thought were the most important, five or six. In the Assemblymember's case, he had, the Assemblymembers were given six, and our pick, our, our project was one of Mr. Quirk's picks. I believe that we probably won't find out what makes the cut of that $3 billion until August. The governor is asking for some pretty big things from the legislature in the budget, and I believe that he will say, "Until I get the things I want, you're not going to get the things you want." And so therefore, there's no real reason to push forward that, that particular budget bill junior that'll amend the budget until the legislature legislative leadership feel like they have enough, you know, they've given the governor enough that he's going to sign it. What would happen is, if they put it in print with all of this, you know, all of the projects that were selected by the Budget Committee and being proposed forward, and didn't immediately pass it and send it to the governor, every member is going to get calls after call after call, right, from everyone who isn't in that list. "Hey, what about us? Could you please?" You know, and so typically, you know, they're gonna, they're going to try to avoid that, that discomfort and wait until they're ready to pass it right away.
Great, thank you very much.
You bet.
I think one of those dead, dead bills is the speed camera bill. I can't remember the number right now, but I know you know it, because we talked about it, and
Yep.
It cannot, I mean, for the past two years, it just doesn't move, and it is, it is just so frustrating when we are, you know, we are dealing with this issue. I mean, someone brought it up earlier, the donuts. I mean, that's the kind of thing, we, I think you ask any one of us, and one of the biggest complaints we get is about speeding cars through neighborhoods or just in general. We cannot get the legislature. Do you have any, any thoughts on why we cannot move that bill? I know we've talked about it. I know there is some opposition from a major stakeholder perhaps, but.
Sure, yeah. So yes, you're right. That bill is another one of those bills that was held on suspense in the Assembly Appropriations Committee in this case. It's always held on suspense in Assembly Appropriations. It actually hasn't been a couple of years. I mean, I, this bill, this idea, this concept has been pushed for at least 12 years that I can think of. And every year, it gets held one way or another, every time. It's not every year necessarily, it comes, comes and goes. And I can tell you, you know, the pushback that I've always heard from legislative staff and members is the concern that this type of technology would be used to generate revenue instead of increase public safety. And that, that is just, that's just an underlying current that I think legislators and legislative staff have concerns with, and I think that that's the thing that is hard to overcome. I think there are ways to overcome it. I could propose a few, but, you know, at this point, I don't know if that's, I mean, it, it's kind of moot this year. We can certainly talk about it again, you know, coming this fall, or, or I could, I could pontificate on this all night, but I also recognize that it is late, and you guys probably have a lot more work to do.
Yeah, we will talk more about it, hopefully, and I mean, I, that's just not true. We're not looking, I know we as Hayward aren't looking for money, and there have been provisions put into the bill to say, "Local governments who have these cannot recover any more than their cost of operating the equipment." You know, these funds could go to help victims of people who get run over by speeding cars.
Sure.
It's just, it's just one of those things that I do, I don't, I wonder, I just wonder, do these legislators, and yet I know they do, live in our communities. We know that our own do. But anyway, that's one of my pet peeves. I also would just comment that I think, I really appreciate the work your firm has done, and it just seems like we have gotten a lot for, you know, well, paying you well less than $1 million over a 13-year period have received, you know, that as much as, you know, more than 50, 50 to 60 billion dollars back in benefits, so that's a pretty good deal. One of the bills that I really that, that is being opposed really at the, both ACTC and A-BAG, which I, you know, am a member of the, or represent the city at, is a bill by the, actually, head of the Assembly Transportation Committee, I believe, Assemblymember Friedman, AB 2237, that we really ought to be watching as a council. It's, it would rank projects according to state climate goals and Plan Bay Area 2050, and prioritize funding based on the rank. Now, that might sound good, and I know that we are all very much advocates of, of meeting state climate goals, and we have our own climate goals. But, you know, when you put all of transportation funding, our, our pavement management, you know, money, or just projects that we need to slow traffic down, because they won't pass a speed camera bill, you know, so we have to put money into traffic calming measures, you know, this is not a good idea. I mean, you know, we all want to support environmental, you know, protecting the environment, but it just, it's, it would really turn control over transportation funding to the Air, Air, California Air Resources Board. And I just, do you have any comments on that moving through and, and whether it's getting enough opposition to perhaps be one of the dead, at least single dead bills?
You know, I really appreciate you, Mayor. You ask the great questions. You ask the ones I love to talk about. So I have to really hold myself back to keep from talking too much about any of these topics. But yeah, so AB 2237, in fact, was, I would argue, a very bad bill in the way it was written. It actually was amended yesterday, today. It came into print today, it was amended yesterday, to be not nearly as bad as it was. I have to tell you frankly, Mayor, the thing that frustrates me most about that bill is it just doesn't work the way it was written, and it should have, it should have, someone should have told Ms. Friedman, frankly, that it, this isn't, this, this doesn't work this way. You know, transportation doesn't work the way you think it works, because otherwise, you know, you wouldn't have proposed this bill. It has been amended into a version that does, that does work. It is a bit, you know, I think it can still be challenging. I would say, I think the biggest challenge that, you know, ACTC will have in the bill, in the new version of the bill, is that it, it does require local measures, you know, self-help counties like Alameda County, their, their measure money to be spent on projects that are included in, you know, regional transportation plans and their, and their sustainable community strategies, the SESs. Generally speaking, that was the intent of, you know, SESs to begin with. SB 375, it was a Steinberg bill back in 2008, maybe, that, you know, created the requirement for the SESs in the regional transportation plans. And, you know, it was intended for the SES to drive the prioritization of projects in a region. And local measures are a way to get around that. But on the other hand, local measures are measures that were voted on by local, you know, the local constituency, and they chose these projects as their priorities. And it's hard to say that it's, you know, the ARB's role to determine whether or not that's, that's right or wrong, because they're, they're local measures, right? So there's still some challenge. So it, there's still some challenges with 2237. I, I think that there'll probably be a lot of opposition that will fall off because of the amendments. And hopefully she, you know, Ms. Friedman will continue to work on the bill and make it better if, if it does move forward. But it is not nearly as bad as it, as it, as it was two days ago. In fact, I, I was just having a conversation about it with my wife on Sunday. And then on Monday, I heard about the amendments and I'm like, oh, well, I, I feel less bad about it now. So, um, yeah, I, I'm happy to inform on how it's been amended if you'd like.
We heard they were coming at the most recent ACTC meeting I attended, but had, they hadn't actually come yet. So, well, well, anyway, I will, we could probably talk all night about state legislation. I'm sorry, Councilmember Marquez, did you have your hand up again?
I did. I'll be brief. Does anybody else in the chambers want to speak?
No, I don't. You know, I have an open public comment on this item, but we don't have anyone in the chambers and now we don't have any attendees on Zoom. So go ahead.
So I'm, I'm sorry, but I'm really excited about this discussion. So it's bringing up a lot of ideas and questions. I'm, I'm looking on your website. I'm just wondering, do you have a recommendation that we could share with the public on how to track bills? I tried to track 256 myself and I find it very confusing. So any suggestions? Is this something we could discuss maybe in the future to partner? Because one of the things that I really want to get at, and I really, really love that Councilmember Andrews always points when everyone calls and yell at us, call the county supervisors, call your state legislators. We are not the only elected decision makers and a lot of this stuff is out of our jurisdiction. So I would also love the City of Hayward at some point to provide information on our website, like what issues fall under county supervisor state and have contact information for all of those said parties. So that's one thing that comes to mind with this discussion. And then if you could just briefly answer, what's the best way to educate someone who's not familiar with our state legislator's process and how do we get that information?
Well, that's a great question. And if it were easy, you wouldn't need me, right? I'm just kidding. There is actually, I mean, there is a website that once you get used to it, it is, it is not terribly difficult to navigate that the legislature operates. It's ledgeinfo.legislature.ca.gov. I'm, I'm happy to talk to, talk you through it if you'd ever want to, you know, chat about it. And, and you can, you can even create an account and track bills yourself and get notifications via email. It, it isn't perfect. It makes mistakes all the time, but it is a lot better than, you know, kind of shooting in the dark. And, and of course, as, as I mentioned a minute ago, like I, I'm here all the time. So, you know, and I work for you and I am always happy to help. Like you can just shoot me an email and say, what's happening with this bill? And I can, I can tell you what I can know.
Thank you. So I did that and I, I didn't see the updates regarding 256. What you provided was way more comprehensive than what I was able to find on the website. So, you know, I appreciate that, but just, I guess, have to become more familiar with that. And just wanted to raise this because if anyone from the public's listening, and I think it's important that we all become familiar with that site as well. Thank you.
Also, the League of California Cities has a good bill tracking feature on its, its website too, if you want to, you know, especially for legislation, I guess. I don't know if they have every single bill, but certainly any, anything that is relevant to cities, I believe. Maybe they do track all the bills. I'm not sure, but.
Thank you, Mayor, and everyone for indulging me with all these questions. Thank you.
And Councilmember Limnan, again.
All right, thank you. Just an idea to throw in the mix, which is perhaps we do an interview with, with yourself, Eric, or somebody from Townsend for Channel 15 to do exactly what Councilmember Marquez is talking about, to talk through sort of essentially what you just did. Here is how this works. Here is where you find the information, et cetera. So just thought I'd throw that idea in the mix.
I think that's a great idea. I was going to suggest that could be one tool. We could also, if you wanted to have a community forum or something, that we're there to educate as well on it, whatever we think makes sense. The, the idea of you could do a link to the League of Cities. If there's a particular bill that is really a, let's say a city priority that you want to highlight on your website, we could work with you and just, you know, well, it could be a tailored update on that that's easy to follow, like where it's at and what to do next. If you want to use that as a call to action, we could kind of explain that in there. If that makes sense, could be another interesting tactic.
Just think if we could have gotten everybody who's ever complained to us about speeding traffic to write a letter to every legislator about, about that bill and say, please pass it. So yeah, I think it's a great idea. I think we should do more to educate people about how they can, because they can have an impact. And I think, especially at the state level and especially in your own district, you know, to influence your own legislator have a, an impact on that. So is there any other council member who wishes to speak tonight? I know that we do have a council member and I, I know she is still attending, but who might actually be in the legislature next year. So I'm sure she's been following this carefully. So in, in any event, with that, we thank you for your representation. And I believe we actually did approve the, the contracts as part of our consent calendar this evening, right? Am I, I am right about that? Yes. Yes. So we already did that. Did you, were you on the, the agenda later than that? So that we wouldn't be judging your performance. But anyway, we, we do appreciate the money you have brought in for us and also your help and advice, even though you, I will forgive you for not getting that speed camera bill through this year. I realize that you faced, you know, tremendous obstacles in doing that. I'm glad you explained it. So thank you with, for that. And if there's no one else that wants to speak, I don't see any.
Thank you very much. We really appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you.
Working with a new session and new hope for the legislation.
All right. Thanks. Okay. And with that, we will move on to, I believe we are at Council Reports and Announcements. Okay, Councilmember Salinas.
Thank you. This Friday at Tennyson Park at Mia's Dream Playground, there is a group, the Hayward Promise Neighborhood, the Hayward Public Library, the City of Hayward and a whole bunch of other partners. I can't name them all off the top of my head here, but there's many. We're going to be at Tennyson Park on the corner of Huntwood and Tennyson Road. And the purpose of this community fair is to promote all of the summer activities and programs for kids and families in Hayward. So there's going to be agencies and, and organizations throughout the city having, having a table and distributing information and, and so forth. Starts at 2 o'clock and it ends at 6:00. The other is next week is the beginning of Let's Do, or Words for Lunch. There will be two sites. There'll be storytime and lunch over at the Hayward Public Library at Heritage Plaza Park on every day, Monday through Friday, from 12 to 1:00. And then the second site will be at Mia's Dream Playground on Monday and Wednesday from 12 to 1:00. And lunch will be distributed and there will be story reading activities with kids. Lastly, just wanted to congratulate this month, well, you know, of course, last month and this month, there's graduations happening almost every week and every weekend. But this week, almost all the high schools in Hayward graduate. So you got Hayward High, Mount Eden, Brankwitz and Tennyson have all graduated their class of 2022. So congratulations, everybody. And of course, I would be remiss, but go farmers.
All right. And thank you. Thank you for your work on those things and for letting us know about them. Councilmember Andrews.
Thank you, Mayor. Wanted to announce again that we'll be having Juneteenth Wellness Festival from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at Heritage Plaza. We have a host of partners and sponsors including East Bay Community Energy, Subaru, TriSet, Alameda County Supervisor, Vaia. Just so many partners who wanted to participate this year. It was overwhelming how much support we have for, for this event. We'll be having trap yoga and we'll be having free yoga mats for the first 70 votes that come down. So get there early if you want to try to get a yoga mat. And then we'll also be offering 10% off drinks at Hippies Brew, which is across the street. So stop by and get a wristband so you can get a little discount off of coffee. We wanted to support this black-owned, female-owned business who has been a great partner with City of Hayward inside of our library. Kirby will be there. A rock wall will be there. I would not be on that rock wall, but if you would like to be on the rock wall, I encourage you to come down. And then we also will have two dance workouts, a kid zone and plenty, plenty of tables with resources for information regarding career wellness. A host of information for our, our community. Again, it's from 10 to 1:00. And I believe there's also going to be a Blues Festival at City Hall Plaza, starting at 2:00 p.m., the Russell City Blues Festival. So we are happy to be in the morning for your workout and you can go and, go and dance to some music in the afternoon. So Hayward is going to be, it's going to be a great, good day for Hayward on this Saturday.
Thank you. It does sound like fun. And I'll add that one of the booths is going to be a booth about our Martin Luther King Annual Celebration Committee that, you know, we haven't really had been able to do this. Well, we didn't, weren't able to do it earlier this year. We had planned to be back at Chabot College doing the in-person event. And at the last minute, you know, the COVID surge over the holiday kind of made us have to cancel that this year. The year before, we actually did a, in 20, in 2021, we did a virtual, you know, we did, we did a film presentation, which I think is available. But anyway, that, that committee that sponsors that event is going to have a booth that, at the Juneteenth event. So that's another thing that will be happening there. Councilmember Marquez.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to thank city staff and specifically our police department that launched multiple Zoom meetings and an open house for our community members to look at the equipment that is being used. It's been defined by the state as military equipment. So it was really good to see hands-on, being able to take a tour of the commands. And I'm losing track of the terminology and the armed vehicle and all the other devices they had out there. So I hope that that was informative and I believe they're going to be working on a video. So people that weren't able to attend the open house, that will be published soon. Also wanted to thank the local firefighters, Local 1909, for supporting Hank. He's a young man in our community who's battling cancer and they made him an honorary fireman this weekend. And a lot of us were out there to meet him and to just celebrate him and wish him all the best. And it was really nice to line up on B Street and just see him drive by in the firefighter, in the, in fire engine. Unfortunately, I think it was a bit overwhelming for him at that point, but he did seem to love all the other events that the firefighters planned for him. So it was really nice to do that. And then also wanted to acknowledge our mayor, who was honored by our Assemblymember Bill Cork this past Saturday. He honored our mayor, Barbara Holiday, as a public servant honoree. It was extremely touching. He honored, he honored his wife, Laura Cork. And I think the biggest takeaway from honoring her is, you know, us electives, we sacrifice a lot. And it was really nice to hear how much he respects the partnership he has with his wife and that, you know, she had to sacrifice, his entire family had to sacrifice in order for him to serve on the city council and then on the state legislature. So it was really nice to just have that acknowledged and just want to thank the mayor for her leadership and other honorees. A lot of ties with Hayward. We had the Executive Director, Vico Vasquez, Andrea Schwab Galindo, and then Elisa Coria De Cell. And I believe she said she grew up in Hayward. And then Monique Berlanga, who is social justice honoree. I believe she's the CEO of Central Liga de la Raza. So a lot of ties to Hayward, even though maybe all the women don't necessarily live here now. But everyone was rooted in Hayward. So that was really nice. And just want to take this moment too, to really acknowledge Assemblymember Bill Cork. He's been a phenomenal advocate, as we saw tonight, and all of the funding he's brought to Hayward and the advocacy efforts. So just wanted to make that comment. And congratulations, Mayor. I hope you enjoyed yourself on Saturday.
Thank you. Yes, I did. Assemblymember Cork and I started our careers, our elected careers at the same time, being both elected at the same time in 2004 to the Hayward City Council. And it looks like we're both going to be ending our careers at the same time at the end of this year. And it was very nice of him to do that. And he has been very supportive. And this was, this was an event that was kind of postponed from March, which he has been doing annually to honor women in the district during Women's History Month. And, and he, he really has done a lot of work and a lot of us talked about that very issue at the, you know, at this event that he had on Saturday, you know, about how women have really advanced during that time. And especially at the local government level. So I know that I'm pleased to serve with, you know, four wonderful women and, and two wonderful men. I won't forget them or leave them out. But those numbers were reversed when I first started on this council. So it's kind of nice to have the reverse now. So Councilmember Zerminio, I think.
Hi. Thank you, Mayor. Seven members of the City of Aranda's over in Jalisco, Mexico, our sister city, came over. Three of them were city council people over there. They were thoroughly impressed with the four days that they spent here in, in Hayward. And they're going to take a lot of ideas as to how we do things. So they're ready and willing to make sure that we have a closer relationship and exchange of personnel and ideas. So they thank everybody here and very, very impressed with what we do and how we do it. All right. And this Thursday at 6:00 p.m., go Warriors.
Okay. Well, that's all been very positive. And I'm going to start with a positive, but maybe end on a little bit not so positive note. You know, as you know, last week, we declared Pride Month in, in our city, designated June as Pride Month and I believe a particular day as well. And then the very next day, last Wednesday, we raised the flag, as we always do for Pride Month on the City Hall Plaza. And that all went really well. And I really appreciate staff's, you know, being part of that. I'm sure most of you have read about the very horrifying incident that occurred at the San Lorenzo Library, County Library in San Lorenzo in the past week. That, you know, it wasn't a, it was a storytime. Members of the transgender community were reading stories to children and some people came in and just were very ugly and disruptive and hostile to the transgender, you know, volunteers that were reading to children. And I, you know, I've talked to city manager about this and I think we're going to, you know, make sure that that kind of thing doesn't happen in any of our libraries. And if it does, there will be very prompt response to end it. But so sorry to end such a nice council report session on that. But I do think the positive is that we have that pride flag flying and it will remain flying for the rest of this month. So with that, we're going to now move to, we have one more item on our agenda and that is a council referral from councilmembers Andrews and Marquez regarding, regarding a bill that was discussed earlier with our legislative leader, Assembly Bill 256, the Racial Justice Act for All and its original statute, Assembly Bill 2542, the California Racial Justice Act. So Councilmember Andrews or Marquez, would you like to say a few words about this?
I, I could jump in, Mayor. So this request is be for the entire council to see if we can support adopting a resolution. This would not create a lot of staff time. It's just doing some research and bringing back a resolution to adopt. And this was a request that came about by community members. And I just feel strongly that it's aligned with our, our values and all the work we've done around inclusivity, dealing with systemic racism. And although And although at this time, the bill is dead, dead, so appreciate that update. I do think it's helpful to support, to bring it back in a resolution, so that way we can encourage our legislators to bring this up again in the next session. So the report in the agenda outlines what the bill is in response to and hoping to have your support. And Councilmember Andrews, feel free to chime in.
Sure. Thank you for that really comprehensive report out on it. I sign in, sign on solidarity of this. I think any opportunity we can to just show equitable treatment of folks, I think we should look into. And I hope that we are, we will consider signing on to this so we can move this forward as much as we possibly can in the next coming year. And I wanted to recognize a particular council, I mean, commissioner who brought it forward is Colin Thermo, who really encouraged us to do some more research and bring it to the days tonight. So hopefully, we'll have your full support.
Thank you. Any questions or other comments? I'm going to open, you know, I didn't open public comment earlier on the legislative item. However, there are zero attendees. I think I did mention that there are zero attendees and there aren't any here. So open and close public comment. Can I just ask, I mean, this, okay, so the bill that we would be supporting, and if we do this, we'll pass a resolution and we'll send it to our legislators and say, please try to get this bill back, you know? But, oh, and I see Councilmember Lamnan has her hand up. But I just wanted to ask, could you just give me an example of when the state seeks a criminal conviction or sentence on the basis of race, ethnicity, or national origin? I mean, it just sounds like such a, you know, just such a thing that should not be done that I, I mean, can you, is this, is this truly happening? That?
I think one of the examples that we heard of is like jury selection not being diverse and just comments being made, you know, in court proceedings in terms of describing an individual. So it would basically address those issues. And right now, I don't want to get into the weeds because right now, the ask is to do more research so that way we can make an informed decision. Obviously, tonight, we do not have a resolution before us. So this is preliminary. I understand that it's, it's not, it's something that we basically have more questions than we can actually answer tonight. So.
And Mayor, we can, we can.
Oh, Madam City Manager?
We can bring, if the council wants us to bring this back for further discussion, we can include some of that analysis in that staff report.
Okay, all right. Thank you. So with that, Councilmember Lamnan.
Thank you.
So I just had a question, and I appreciate this discussion because, yeah, I had some questions when it came forward from the community. And I concur, I appreciate the community highlighting this. I think Ben the Ark has been working on this, as well as, I got an email earlier today from League of Women Voters supporting it. And so my question, sort of to my colleagues, as well as to the city managers, builds on what our city manager just talked about in terms of, would this be a resolution? Would it really be a letter of support? Would it be a letter, like signing on to perhaps something that the league is leading, you know, when this comes back? Hopefully, this comes back in the fall. You know, I'm just wondering, I'm supportive of supporting the, and the intent here. I'm just wondering how it fits with sort of our, the way we typically handle bills. You know, usually, it's a letter. So if anybody wants to speak to just what this would look like. And also, sort of, if it's consistent, which I think this one is, with our stated policies, do we need, does it need to come back to council? Or do we need, you know, can we just move it forward? So just sort of wanted to check, have the process question, if I could.
Let us do some digging on what, you know, if this is going to come back, where, kind of what its status is, if the league has taken any positions on it. And I think that'll determine whether it's a resolution, a letter, a letter encouraging that the legislature take it back up again. So let us, let us do some digging first, and we can formulate the appropriate follow-up and bring that back to council.
I would be supportive of that, but defer to my, to the makers of the referral.
Voting on this referral this evening will bring it back to us. And I mean, I really think the main, you know, benefit of doing this is to have a discussion and highlight, you know, for people like me who may not have, be as familiar with some of the elements that people are concerned about that are happening. And so it's really important that we, that we bring it back with some information and educate, you know, to educate ourselves and the community about what is happening and why this bill should be supported. So with that, would you care to make?
To make a motion, just want to make sure no one else wanted to weigh in. Second?
Except for Councilmember Andrews, right?
So I want to make sure my motion captures Councilmember Lamnan's viewpoint, which is, I would ask that this vote is to direct staff to conduct an analysis to determine whether or not a resolution, a letter in support. And did you mention one more option?
Signing on to petition.
Or signing on to petition, basically to analyze what would be the best approach to respond to this request. And.
Okay.
That's my motion.
Is there a second?
Trying to not make it complicated, sorry.
Okay. I see Councilmember Wahab's. So, so did you want to second it, Councilmember Andrews, since you?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion by, has been made by Councilmember Marquez, seconded by Councilmember Andrews. Councilmember Wahab?
Yeah, I was going to ask Councilmember Marquez and Councilmember Andrews if they can include in their motion that this move forward without necessarily returning. I think that for the most part, I would assume we all agree on the intent of, you know, sticking with the whole no room for racism. And I don't think it necessarily needs to come back. It just needs to be obviously supported by us. And then staff move it forward with a letter or the signing of petition or potentially a resolution. But I think the letter would make sense because it's in a different body.
I would support that, though my only concern is if we go the resolution route, that does have to be adopted by this party. A letter does not. Typically, the mayor just signs off on that, but if we.
But we already heard that the bill is, you know, I mean, that that might not do a whole lot since the bill is dead this year. But, I mean, I think it needs to come back just because I also think it merits, you know, a more public discussion of why this is necessary. And, you know, I would, I think it should. I think this, a referral is, you know, basically for an action to come back, so, and be.
So I fully support this. I would also then, you know, would like to add, if we're going to have a list of who it could go to, our local county has a, I always forget, and city manager, you could correct me, you know, the grand juries, right? The diversification of grand juries. I know that that's always been a complaint of certain community members and much more. So I think we can be all encompassing as well. So I'm fully supportive of this, and it's too bad that it already died in Sacramento, but I support this.
Well, you know, as he said, dead bills can live again. So, and I just think the discussion, the public discussion of these, of the issues is important, too, for the community and, you know, and for us to understand. So with that, on seeing no further requests to speak, the motion to move the referral forward was made by Councilmember Marquez, seconded by Councilmember Andrews. Madam City Clerk, I'm going, you know, I'll open public comment. Did I do that on this issue? And close it since there are no attendees here or on Zoom. Madam City Clerk, will you call the roll?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Andrews?
Aye.
Councilmember Lamnan?
Aye.
Councilmember Marquez?
Aye.
Councilmember Salinas?
Yes.
Councilmember Wahab?
Yes.
Councilmember Zermeño?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
Yes, and the motion passes with seven i-votes. So, and that brings us to our adjournment this evening, and we will be meeting again a week from now, June 21st at 7:00 p.m. And until then, this council meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.